The meeting of the East Hampton Town Zoning Board of Appeals for July 17th, 2018. Our Chair, John Whalen, is not with us this evening, so I will sit in the Chair's spot for the night. We have four public hearings on. The first one tonight is the application of Marshall and Michael Cheek and Grimstad. It's an application with respect to a 41,117 square feet of property at 17 Bearing Road East on the map of landfall, Section 1, filed on January 31st, 1972, to construct a 600-square-foot accessory structure garage within front yard setbacks. The relief sought is one variance from Section 255-11-10 at the Table of Dimensional Regulations of the Town Code, one variance of 9.7 feet for the construction of the proposed garage to be 40.3 feet from the front lot line where a 50-foot setback is required. It's in Zone X flood zone, and it's Type 2 secret. So, I believe you're the applicant?
Yes.
Oh, actually, we need jurisdiction. Thank you. Do we have proper posting and service on the neighbors?
We do. The affidavit service and posting appears that notice is proper.
Okay. And we'll do the -- I'm sorry, got ahead of myself. Thank you very much. Member Brenneman, this is in your district, I believe?
It is.
It's in yours?
Yep, it's in mine.
Very well, thank you. So Beth, if you would pull up the Bearing Road. Okay, so I've visited the property yesterday, and the posting was prominently displayed in the front of the home. I think the next -- there we go. So now I am walking into the driveway, and on our survey, it would be facing west as I'm coming down the driveway, and the house is in front of us. The car is sitting in front, I believe, of the area where the garage is proposed. I've now continued walking, and now I'm in front of the little carve-out in the driveway. I'm facing west, and directly behind this car again would be the proposed garage. And you can just tell by this photograph that the property begins to slope away pretty dramatically, just to the right of that vehicle. And I'll show that a little bit more. It's kind of hard to capture perfectly, but I'll show a little bit more of it. Now I just turned and scanned and just took a picture of the front of the home. Okay, so then directly to the left of the home is a walkway that goes down behind. So this view starts to go down at a steep decline. And I think the next photo, I'm actually standing in front of the deer fence, looking into now the backyard in the pool area in the back. Now I'm turned around from that same location, looking back up, so you do get some perspective for the slope of the property. I then walked down into the backyard, stood kind of in front of the pool area, and took a shot, so you see a pretty considerable decline in the terrain there. Now I walked back up. I'm standing where the proposed garage would be placed. I'm looking out toward the street, and so this is the view of the street from where the garage would be. And then the next shot, now I'm back out on the street, looking in, and this would be -- you can just barely see the house in the distance there, and the car sort of in front of it, and the garage would be obviously just to the left of where the car is there.
What?
That's it. No?
No. Okay. Okay, Lori Wiltshire for Land Planning Services, representing the applicants. This is an application for one minor variance of 9.7 feet in order to construct a 600-square-foot detached garage 40.3 feet from the front lot line where 50 feet is required. The proposed garage meets pyramid and height restrictions. Granting the variance would not cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and would not create a detriment to nearby properties. The proposed structure's only 600 square feet, is situated on a bit of a hill, and is very well screened from neighboring properties on all sides. Due to the placement of the existing house and the natural topography of the property, which I think is most obvious -- we tried to shoot that in our photos, too, so you could see how it falls off quite dramatically from the place where we've chosen to put the garage, but it's really most obvious on the survey. Those topo lines get very, very tight as you move forward more into the property towards the back. So if we were to move it back even 10 feet, we'd probably have to regrade, definitely clear a lot, regrade, but also possibly build the garage on some sort of stilts so that it was flush with the driveway, because the property falls off. So the existing gravel driveway leads directly to where the garage is proposed to be located. And I just said to put it 10 feet back would involve unnecessary site disturbance and extensive grading and approximately twice as much clearing of mature trees than what is currently proposed. So there's no adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. In fact, locating it in this space will create much less of an impact than setting it back 50 feet. While it wouldn't be impossible to put the garage back another 10 feet and to comply with zoning, this should not preclude granting the requested minor variance. It will not be visible from adjacent properties to the west or from across the street due to the dense vegetation. You can't even see the existing driveway on the aerial photo I supplied. The parcel to the east is actually a reserved area, so they certainly won't be impacted. Although it was requested in the memo, we were supposed to submit updated clearing, we have had a very unusual circumstance where we've not been able to get that from the surveyor, nor have we gotten return emails or returned phone calls. And my client even helped trying to prod our surveyor to get back out there and update clearing, pointing out that he paid all his bills and what -- we don't know what happened, but we weren't able to get it. So what we are offering instead is that you can make a condition of approval that a revised clearing calculations be shown on the as-built survey to show that the lot is not overcleared before the issuance of a CO. I think that's a reasonable compromise. And finally, attached to the packets I handed you are letters from both of the neighbors immediately across the street from the subject property in support or not objecting at all to the variance for the garage, and they would be the most impacted.
Very well.
Thank you.
Regarding the clearing, though, I thought in the TAM it said that the area behind the deer fencing?
Yeah, well, that's the issue altogether, because the reason they put the deer fencing up is because that's the area of the property they actually use. And they have a small dog, and they're very nervous about ticks. So the area inside the deer fence is the usable part of the property in their mind. The rest of it, the leaf litter can remain, and the native remnants can return if they've been cleared for any reason, if they shouldn't have been. Not a problem to my clients at all. And I believe with that in mind, by the time we get something from your office and something from the building department and build the garage and get an as-built survey done with clearing calculations on it, regrowth will have occurred. And therefore, the clearing calculations should be conforming to the code.
Is the survey clocked in on April 6th of this year?
I don't have a stamp date on mine. It's last revised January 31st of 2018.
Okay, yeah, that's that.
Yep.
Members? No?
I have no question.
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Michael.
Hello, Planning Department. We really have nothing else. It's pretty straightforward, pretty simple. I just would like to note that a condition was left off of the assessment in error, just a project limiting fence concurrent with the clearing line around the proposed garage.
I'm sorry. I didn't quite hear what you said.
Project limiting fence near --
Around the proposed clearing line.
As an additional condition.
As an additional condition.
Well, that's not on the TAM?
No. Left off in error.
And just to confirm, in the TAM, you indicated the Planning Department's view is that you agree this is probably in the most conforming spot on the property.
Yeah, yeah. Just as you get outside the driveway area, it's deep sloped away. See its way.
Yep. Okay. Very good.
I agree with that additional condition, and I'm just going to submit a copy of my words for your record.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So if we have nothing else? Yes, I think yes. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to speak on this matter? In that case, we have nothing else?
Therefore, I make a motion that we close the public hearing at 17 Bearing Road East, East Hampton, Tax Map Number 300-55-1-20 for Marshall Cheek and Michael Grimstad. And we'll close the public hearing and also the public record.
Second. I concur. And we have nine minutes till the next public hearing, so I think it's worthwhile to take on the extensions of time. I have two here.
Sure.
Okay. They're both in Montauk. Want to take a look at them?
Good.
All right. First one is in the matter of the application of David Welch, 240 West Lake Drive, Montauk, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 300-12-4-28.1. The resolved that the determination filed June 14th, 2011, and amended and filed July 20th, 2011 is amended and extended to permit applicant to obtain a building permit within one year of the date of the filing of this amended resolution. An applicant shall apply for and obtain a certificate of occupancy no later than 18 months from the date of the filing of this amending resolution. Further resolved, the original determination of approval filed with the town clerk on June 14th, 2011, and amended and filed on July 20th, 2011, is reaffirmed in all other respects. So do we make a --
Okay. So you gave my speech.
I apologize.
All right, so in the matter of --
I didn't mean to do that to you.
David Welch, 240 Lake -- West Lake Drive, Montauk, Tax Map 300-12-4-28.1, and make a motion to approve this extension of time.
Second.
Concur. And I concur. Okay. Now I'll just read the application, and I'll let you read the rest of it. And this is in the matter of the application of Margaret Winsky, 34 Seaview Avenue in Montauk, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 300-51-1-6.1. And without further ado.
Thank you. So this is a determination originally filed in the year 2000, and extended by resolution in subsequent years, in 2003. And it's another filing to be extended in order that the extension of time in order to obtain the said building permit and certificate of occupancy. This one's getting a little old. I guess I will give this an extension of time. So I make a motion in the application of Margaret Winsky, 34 Seaview Avenue, Montauk, Tax Map 300-51-1-6.1, and make a motion to approve this extension of time.
Second.
Concur.
I concur. The only other matters that we have which might occupy time is the AGXG on Gardeners Island, but I think that's going to take a bit more than five minutes.
I don't, actually.
No?
Want to discuss it?
Well, I don't want to delay the start of the -- if we can do it in less than five.
I think so.
All right, then let's give it a shot. Do we give these to council? Do we give these to the F? Can you go back on the phone?
Good evening, Brian.
Good evening, Board members. AGXG application is the application for Gardeners Island. It's a maintenance dredging permit that we've issued at least on two separate occasions. I haven't reviewed the application in detail yet, and I still need to do a little background work, so we're not ready to proceed immediately with the notice for the application. But it appears similar to the conditions and the parameters that have been issued in two prior maintenance dredging permits. As you know, Gardeners Island has basically two ways to get to the island. There's an airstrip, and there's a boat basin. And the boat basin is the primary means of getting goods and materials to the island. This is the boat basin where there is a latatorial movement of sand from northwest to southeast. You can see the accretion on the updrift side here. This is the inlet. There's a boat basin in here, and this is the road that leads to the house. In the past, the application has involved the dredging of the inlet and boat basin to a depth of, I believe, eight feet at mean low water. And it's also included the dredging of this area here, and you can see that unusual shape. That's a deposition basin, which is dug out to give the sand someplace to go, so it doesn't -- you know, in protracted bad weather and a series of storms, the inlet can shoal, making it difficult or even dangerous for boats to get in there. And that limits the primary means of getting especially goods and materials to the island. In the past, as I've mentioned, we've issued maintenance dredging permits where all the clean sand, most of it goes in this area here. There is some backfill of the updrift side of the inlet, but most of the material goes on the downdrift side. Material that's not beach compatible gets removed and disposed of in upland location. If you'd like, I can email you the most recent maintenance dredging permit that's in your files from 2012. I would imagine the conditions are going to be similar, if not the same. The only way they'd be different if there are different circumstances physically on the island. As I said, I haven't been there yet, and I haven't reviewed the material in depth. But with the summer schedule coming up, if the application is completed, a window when there isn't an opportunity to bring this to the board, obviously, we're not going to proceed with the administrative process if it's -- if there are significant questions about the work.
Is it weather-sensitive when the work happens?
The dredging usually occurs -- they usually have a window for dredging, and that occurs in December to January.
Okay. So we need to get this done before then?
That would be the -- yeah, that would be the next -- their next window is when they'll need to dredge.
So you're gauging whether there are any concerns that the board has before you move forward?
We do this with administrative applications. We try not to bring -- we don't bring applications to the board where we think there are poor candidates for administrative review, or we expect there to be controversy if we know that there's a problem among neighbors, or unusual conditions, unusual history of the property.
Obviously, you're following previous protocol and procedures.
The prior two permits were administrative. I do have some photos here. This is from the last time I was at the island. This is that deposition basin, and you can see the erosion on the --
Do a site visit?
It's actually in your district, so I was thinking the same thing.
Yes.
I was thinking the same thing.
This is looking southeast, so this is the downdrift beach that scours. This is looking further to the east. This is where the dredge material goes. And I thought I had a -- yeah, this is facing the inlet. So this is the inlet here, and the boat basin is back here. And this is where the dredge material goes. Either the harbor masters or the managers of the island have been very helpful in us getting there when we have a reason to go there. And if you want to coordinate the site visit, I'm sure that --
Actually, I peed there once. Yes, but now you can actually get out of your --
So barring any issues that you might find --
This issue may require the full board.
Yeah.
If any questions come up, again, I'm not ready to proceed with the notice next week, but I did want to get this on the agenda. The summer schedule gets a little unusual. We have holidays at the end of August and some other irregularities in the schedule that I wouldn't want this to come right up to the window unless there was a --
I agree. Yep, no issues.
I have no problem with it.
Okay, so we'll work on -- we'll work directly with each other in scheduling and make sure that it gets on the agenda in time to -- I imagine they have to stage things and order equipment and other issues.
They do that in advance. They just need the paperwork to be in hand.
They just need to know that we have it in place.
And so that they can do it.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We don't have to do anything with this. We just --
Correct.
Okay, very good. That was six minutes, and my hat's off. If I was wearing --
You don't need a motion? To go administratively?
Well, we're not actually doing it.
Yeah, no, it's a possible administrative application.
Brian was just gauging us, I think, on whether we had any concerns.
Okay.
But said he was going to come back at the appropriate -- once he had done this.
Were you going to come back at all?
No, I'm requesting for permission once he updates.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Just okay.
Barring any issues that he finds, right.
So we do need them?
Yeah.
This would be in --
Who's that? Who's Gardeners?
I make a motion for -- to allow -- Brian, do you have a tax map number?
Yeah, here. Two-thirds of the way down.
In the case of AGXG, Gardeners Island, and make a motion to allow the process to proceed administratively for Suffolk Tax Map Number 300-203-03-01.
Second.
Concur. Concur. Okay. All right. It is now 6:53. Okay. So we will move forward with the application. That's on for 6:50 of Kathleen O'Sullivan, and it relates to 7,936 square feet at 1936 Montauk Highway in Montauk-on-C, Section 8, Lot 41, Map Number 2438. And this is an amagansad, which in John's absence, I'm going to cover. Tax Map Number 300-131-03-9.1. The application is to demolish the existing residence, decking and associated structures, and to construct an approximately 2,391-square-foot two-story residence with 288-square-foot swimming pool, 207 square feet of decking with outdoor shower, steps with a landing, a 600-square-foot driveway, and sanitary system on a parcel of land containing dunes and dune vegetation. The relief sought is a Natural Resources Special Permit pursuant to Section 255-4-20 of the Town Code and any other necessary relief. It's in a B residence zone, X flood zone, secret class type 2. And do we have an affidavit of service?
We do have the affidavit of service and posting appears that notice is proper.
Very well, thank you. This is the posting on Montauk Highway. Next picture, and this is the, I guess, driveway. That is looking west on Montauk Highway, and that is looking towards, what is that, Nappy Carver Road, which hits Montauk Highway just almost directly across the street from the property. Next one is -- well, there's a truck there. And beyond that is Montauk Highway going east. You can see the side of the driveway. Next, in the posting, again, that's the driveway a little tighter in. Next is the house taken from the driveway. Next is the back. I've gone around the back, and that's obviously the back of the premises. Next is further back, wider shot of the premises. You can see the neighbor in the background there, neighboring property. Next is turning around from where I was standing, 180 degrees. That's the neighbor, I guess, to the immediate west. Next picture is looking, I think I'm looking south at that point. May have moved a few steps deeper into the property. And next is looking east from, again, the backyard. And next is looking back at the house, give a little wider perspective of the property. Next is, I stepped back a bit, and again, in the back. Next, please, is again the neighbor. The neighbor, lovely shot. And now with the last picture is the driveway, again, looking from where I started. There you are. Does anyone have any questions, issues? I didn't take an overhead. I don't --
Might have merged with the planners.
I didn't have my drone working that day.
Are you going to take it up with the event?
I don't know. Helicopter. So if the applicant wishes to go forward?
Do we have a servant? I don't know. I've got this revegetation, but I don't see a servant here.
Thank you. Here. Yeah, there's -- I think we have a few.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have a few. Thank you very much. Anyone need a servant?
Yes.
We're giving them away. I have one done. Okay.
It's dated 1717.
Wow. The survey that we're working with is dated July 18th, 2017?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Jonas Hagen of Dew East Planning. I'm here with Susan Briarley of Dew East and the owner of the property at 1936 Montauk Highway, O'Sullivan. I just want to mention briefly, I think it's relevant, that the house as it exists today is uninhabitable. We understand that the proposal for the property represents a significant increase in the gross floor area of the residence, as well as the building coverage on the existing lot. However, please note that the total lot coverage is increasing by 309 square feet, and that is only 3% of the lot area. Now we'll briefly describe the general characteristics of our proposal with regard to the NRSP standards of Section 255-551 of the Town Code. Then Kathleen O'Sullivan will specifically address reasons for the proposed house size. First, we wholeheartedly agree with the project conditions outlined in the technical analysis memo for the NRSP. Specifically, with regards to compliance for Town Code, Section 255-540, for environmental protection and preservation of natural resources, we're proposing to clear an additional 1,820 square feet in order to construct the home, pool, decking, septic system, and drainage. The proposed additional clearing is primarily for the installation of the septic and drainage and would be necessary regardless of the gross floor area, as the proposed improvements are within the general footprint of the existing home, deck, and hot tub. Currently, there is a substandard septic system, no drainage, and no dry well for the hot tub. The introduction of the IA Innovative and Alternative Septic and New Drainage Systems will reduce the current environmental impact from -- will reduce the current environmental impact from this residence. We agree that the installation of a project fence, project limiting fence along the perimeter of the clearing area will provide protection to the dune land during construction and will gladly install and maintain an appropriate structure. After construction, we propose to restore one thousand seven hundred sixty square feet of the cleared area with native vegetation. The final clearing will only be increased by sixty square feet, as shown in the sketch plan submitted to the board on July sixth. And with regard to guidelines for the same code regarding compatibility, the property is zoned for residential use and already developed consistent with East Hampton Town zoning and the immediate surrounding neighborhood. The scale and.
Is it consistent with East Hampton Town zoning or is it pre-existing zoning? You know, when the house was, was constructed?
Right.
Well, it's consistent with the zoning and it, I'm just trying to figure out that last statement of yours.
Okay. What's that? Consistent with current zoning parameters.
It's consistent, the current house?
Yes.
Okay. I'll take that.
Yep. Yep. Uh, I think, yes. The scale and style of the proposed home was carefully designed by Hollenbeck and Smith Architects to be consistent with the character of the neighborhood. The proposal requires no zoning variance and meets all dimension restrictions outlined in Section two five-five, eleven-ten, as well as conforming to the pyramid restriction in our town code. And I think that might add further clarification. From the street or public perspective, the proposed home is of comparable scale and mass to other properties in the immediate neighborhood. In addition, the house, pool, and decking are within the area of the lot that is already disturbed. Will gladly meet all of the specific project conditions outlined in the memo, as we and our client wish to help preserve the natural environment in the area for present and future generations. And we also thank the planning department for their rigorous work.
Excuse me, you made a comment that the proposed construction is already within the disturbed area. So are we considering the dune land that's, that's south of the residence that's still untouched, that you're now expecting to be, to be just already disturbed? Or, or is that, or is that still dune land as per the TAM valuable dune land?
Right. Um, we have a project limiting fence, right?
No, you, your statement said, your statement said that the construction is within a already disturbed area. My question is, the dune land that is presently south of the existing house, you're disturbing that. So your statement is, wouldn't be true.
Our statement was intended to say that the, the final improvements that we're proposing are within the footprint of what's already there. In other words, the pool is going on top of where the hot tub is. The house is generally going with it.
Right.
So we are clearing more than what's there.
Right, so then what's the, what's the pool chamber for?
The pool chamber is for the drainage that doesn't exist for the hot tub. And that is actually not within that beautiful dune that's sort of across the four properties that touch. It's sort of in a more cleared area on the property. It's actually within cleared area already. So we'll be restoring that and adding more beach vegetation over that area when it's done. And I also wanted to address your previous question about the conformance with zoning. We believe the existing house, I think you were asking about the existing house. I think the existing house violates pyramid right now. So the house we're proposing is in complete conformance with zoning requirements today. Whereas I think the existing house doesn't.
That I understand.
Okay.
I thought, I thought he was making reference to the existing.
No, he was talking about the proposed house.
Okay, fine, my bad.
And could you, could you just address the difference between what you presented us and what I see up there in terms of the dimensions of the property and the location within the property of the home?
Okay, so this is the existing house here. This is a hot tub. We have some decks here.
No, no, I'm, I'm.
The map.
The property line, which appears there to be right on the other property's house.
This is askewed, I think. This, 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 they're not perfect.
Those are slightly skewed. They're not always accurate.
They're difficult.
Okay, all right.
So when I, when I do that, those maps, I try to align the actual house from my survey to the house on the aerial, so it's a little bit more accurate than what you might be seeing.
So it's a little bit skewed.
Okay.
You've got to look at the survey.
Yep.
So really, the, when, what you're going to be doing is replacing, in terms of just land area, house, you're going to be replacing deck, decking with house.
Exactly. We'll have less decking. Instead of the hot tub, we'll have a small pool. I believe it's, what's it, eight by twenty or twelve by twenty?
Twelve by twenty.
Twelve by twenty-four.
Twelve by twenty.
The, the, the hot tub is in, it looks like a very small portion of what is now going to be.
It's, it looks like it's six by six or an eight by six.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but it's gonna, the pool will line up pretty much with the edge of the hot tub now and come this way.
Mm-hmm. Follow the, well, it won't be, according to the survey, it won't be as wide as the house. It'll be a few feet narrower than the house.
Correct.
And you won't have a hot tub?
No hot tub. The hot tub's going and hopefully a pool will be there in its place. Similar, it actually lines up very nicely with this pool next door here. Sort of in the same line, if you look on the aerial.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
What is, what is this?
What are the?
Oh, that's the.
Is that gravel?
That's the pool chamber.
Oh.
Pool chamber.
There is currently gravel in the back there that will be removed.
Yeah.
Where the pool chamber is showing?
It's, it's kind of scattered. It's kind of hard to tell because the property's so overgrown. Nobody's lived there in a number of years.
Where were the pool equipment be?
The pool equipment, I believe, will be under the deck.
So is it correct that the driveway is going over what is today dune land?
Yes, well, we're going to have to clear in here to put a driveway because the IA chambers will go over here where the existing driveway is, and we can't drive on top of those.
And did you consider other designs that would?
For septic?
Not end up disrupting the dune in front?
Unfortunately, the only other design that we could put in there would be a raised septic system, which would require retaining walls, and we wouldn't be able to drive there anyway.
Members, any other questions? I'm just wondering if that, the pool drainage.
Drainage.
Could be relocated somewhere.
Hmm. It's pretty tight. We could check the numbers and see if we can do it to the side.
The wood ties, is that existing?
Pardon me?
The wood ties?
The wood ties, they are there, yes.
They're existing?
They're existing and proposed to be removed.
What is this alley? It's as part of alley as abandoned, is that?
Yeah, there's a twenty-foot wide alley that runs between all the parcels between Montauk Highway and Leighton.
Yeah, it's, it's a path. There's a, when you get down to that corner, it, it leads, that side. It leads west.
It's allowed the property owners to abandon about six feet of the alley on each side so that they maintain a four-foot wide path for the neighbors.
Well, I'm sorry, what were you saying?
The owners in the area are permitted to abandon up to six feet of the alley and leaving a four-foot wide path between the properties for pedestrian access to the beach.
That's, that, that's an easement of some sort?
I'm not sure if it's actually an easement.
Will the shower?
It's nappy.
Will the outdoor shower be connected to a dry well?
Um, the outdoor shower will be required to be connected to a dry well, yes.
Yeah. Is that shown?
The shower is, not the connection, but the dry wells exist along the side or proposed along the side of the house.
Will we need that to be revised to show there? It can be a condition.
Mm-hmm. It typically is a condition.
Okay, that's fine. Anything else?
No other questions?
I would like to introduce Mrs. O'Sullivan. She has some comments she'd like to provide for the board.
Please.
Good evening, board members.
Hello, welcome. We'll need, we'll need your name and address.
This is going to be very hard to do. Dear members of the board, I've read the technical.
Name and address.
We'll need your name and address.
Oh, Kathleen O'Sullivan. My present address is one-one-five Park Lane, Douglasson, Queens, New York. I've read the technical analysis memo and discussed it with the planner. Our discussion resulted in my requesting that the planner do everything possible to preserve the dune land character of my lot for the benefit of my children and of course, maintain the standards for similar small land dune properties. To that end, please take into consideration the following special circumstances of my family. Please make this written submission part of the record when contemplating the issues of the NRSP special permit. My husband and I have six kids, three of whom, three of whom are legally blind. Please see the attached from the New York State Office of Family Services, Commission for the Blind, Visually Impaired, and Handicapped. I would like, also like to bring to your attention the fair housing requirements supported by the United States Department of Housing, Urban Development, specifically requirement number two, an accessible public and common use areas, which states that housing must have accessible and usable public and common use areas, which include outdoor recreational areas. This property was purchased for the use of the family. I have been left with no choice but to demolish the entire mole-infested disaster that is the existing structure. There is a total number of eight people in my family, immediate family. So yes, we need a larger structure, more bedrooms to accommodate, same. Truth be known, four bedrooms isn't enough, but it'll have to do. Add any more bedrooms and I would have to excuse to fend off the cast of our extended immediate family. Parents and siblings, first cousins would all show up when they decide to visit. The current cesspool is dysfunctional. My engineer and planner have assured me that the proposed IA system will accommodate a large family, and it will be a substantial improvement over the current system. It'll provide a benefit to our environment and the groundwater. My understanding is that most of the present structure was built either not to code or built according to an outdated code. It certainly wasn't built for special needs, also known as handicapped occupants. The existing spiral staircase was, for example, is a death trap for the handicapped. Please understand that the purpose of this house is to allow my family, especially those with special needs, access to one of the most beautiful beaches in the world, which we will seek to preserve for everyone's enjoyment. Please understand that I agree with the spirit and the purpose of the NRSP permit. Um, please understand that, okay, excuse me, and that I, and that the plans submitted by the planner address all of your concerns, which again, are shared by my family. I have three children who will never be able to get behind the wheel of a car, drive themselves to the beach, and enjoy the, the presence of the natural dunes, vegetation, and ocean. So I'm trying to build a house where there is one in their own backyard, as it were. I quote, "The technical analysis memo, planning department analysis, recommendations for the board of consideration. When looking at this project in light of the general and specific NRSP standards, is the size of the residence, building coverage, and the amounts of the clearing compatible with the surroundings and with the character of the neighborhood? I ask the board also, when looking at this project, consider the size, general special needs, and the character of my family, who wishes to avail themselves and have access to the natural resources, which is the intended purposes of the natural resources special permit. I believe this will enhance the character of the neighborhood and set an excellent precedent. We all have an obligation to present the environment, to preserve the environment for everyone's use and enjoyment. My family's not unique or special. There are many special needs people and families. We are blessed with the ability to afford our family, our children, access to our precious and fastest appearing nat, uh, natural resources. The existing structure is uninhabitable, vacant for years and years, and a complete eyesore to the community. The new structure, albeit larger than the previous one, can also enhance the character of the neighborhood while, according to establishing and standing with the requirements of the NRSP and more." Okay. "I maintain the integrity of the dunes, the natural vegetation, the beach, and the ocean. Thank you for your time and the time and the consideration of my family and the purpose of which the project is intended when making your decision on issuing the NRSP permit."
When, how long have you owned the property?
Uh, two years and four months.
Okay, so obviously, when you bought the property, you know there was standards that were already in place that, you know, NRSP, dune land vegetation, and stuff that the town looks to protect.
Yeah. Yeah, it was never my intention when I, when I saw this, when I saw this property, it was just the beauty of the original setting of it.
I understand, but you're, 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 you still bought a piece of property within an area of protected dune land.
And I'll continue to protect it.
Just as long as you understand that.
No, I understand. I, I want to protect it, and I agree with everyone protecting it. I would never disturb anything or cause any natural vegetation to disappear or the, or the sand dunes. That, that, we wouldn't, we never had that in our intentions.
If you want to make that part of the record, that statement, you can hand it up and we'll include it, unless it's already been submitted.
Yes.
Okay, so you're welcome to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Members, do you have any more questions for the applicant?
No.
I do not.
I have additional documentation, medical stuff, things like that.
You can hand up what you want, and we can put it into the record at your, you're, you're the applicant. You can decide what you want us to consider and what you want to be part of the record.
Okay. Thank you.
You have that statement, if you want to add that, whatever you want. But. I, I have to clock it.
Yes, I'll submit it.
I don't know, I, I need it for the file. I have the original file right now.
Yeah, it should go to the chairman. He has to stamp it in.
Oh, excuse me.
So whatever you're submitting should go to the chairman.
Okay.
Thanks, okay. You want all of that in?
No, I don't.
Why don't you let the other folks who are going to speak, and then you can hand it up when we're all done. Before, before, has, just one more? Okay, very well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is it Tyler? Is this yours? Tyler Borzac, planning?
Good evening, Tyler Borzac for the planning department. Uh, so the proposed project represents a fairly expansive redevelopment of a dune land property in an area of town with many similarly constrained lots. The board should examine this application in the context of the neighborhood as a whole. The entire Montauk on the Sea subdivision is very similar in character, a lot of smaller lots, and very similar habitat across almost all of the lots. Since this application has the potential to set a precedent for the area and used as an example when redeveloping other similar lots in the future, the board should examine this property closely to determine how important keeping the dune land character is on similar neighboring properties. The project requires a significant amount of clearing, although that will now be revegetated to some degree, and represents a significant expansion of the gross floor area as well as the building coverage on the property, both of which propose to be increased to nearly the maximum allowable under zoning. The current application proposes an increase in clearing from sixty-seven percent to ninety percent, although it'd probably be reduced to around sixty-eight percent after a revegetation. It's also proposing to increase lot coverage from ten percent to nineteen point eight percent, where twenty percent is the maximum allowable. And finally, it's increasing gross floor area of the residence from an existing approximately one thousand seventy-six square feet to two thousand three hundred ninety-one square feet, which is two point six square feet from the maximum allowable. And that would be on any lot in town of that size. In addition, the residence and swimming pool are proposed right up against the required side and rear yard law line setbacks and pyramid regulations. It appears that this redevelopment is attempting to maximize what would be allowed on any lot this size in town regardless of any natural features. There does not, it appear to be any significant attempt to retain the dune land remaining on the lot. It's always easier to retain dune land vegetation rather than revegetate later.
Tyler, one of the things we've got to look at in a lot this size is, how do we, how do we save some of the dune land when the sept, the new septic system requirements and stuff almost driving these small little lots to be encumbered like that?
Absolutely. I mean, there's plenty of dune land in the rear and on the sides. I mean, the sides are, the sides are getting completely cleared, and that's just from construction. So again, one of the things we suggested in the assessment is revegetation on those, the sides of the, of the, of the house after construction's completed to sort of get that back, which they've done, and, and, and it's, it's good to see, absolutely.
What's, what's the precedent that you see being set, and what troubles you about that?
Uh, well, we're just sort of presenting it to the board. We're not against the application. We're just presenting it to the board to be something to be aware of, that it is, it is a large redevelopment. They're maxing out the zoning regulations in a lot of areas. That's something the board should be aware of when they're discussing the, you know, the redevelopment of the lot.
So it's the size, essentially, that?
Yeah, yeah, and by, based on the size, you're losing that, that habitat.
Mm-hmm, okay. Now, shall I make sure that I'm clear on what?
Sure.
Is the concern of the planning?
Absolutely. And when looking at the project in light of the general specifics NRSP standards, the board should discuss the size of the residence, the amount of lot coverage, the clearing required, and the redevelopment general, and is it compatible with the surroundings and with the character of the neighborhood, and is it without undue disturbance of the natural features? Other than that, I can answer any other questions you might have.
Yeah, well, they've agreed to all the recommended conditions, including retaining the dune vegetation that's excavated on site and revegetated. They haven't listed the species. I assume that you would want to approve the revegetation.
Sure, prior to, yeah, prior to building permit, that's fine, yeah.
Members, any other questions for Tyler from Borzac?
That's me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard on this, with respect to this application? Okay, and does the applicant have anything they wish to add at this point? I'm sorry? Did you have anything we wanted to make? Wasn't there something on the survey?
Yeah, I think we can do that as far as when we decide to get it.
Very well, all right. In that case, I move that with respect to the application of Kathleen O'Sullivan at Suffolk County Tax Map Number 300-131-03-9.1, that the record be closed. And the public hearing be closed. Very well, thank you. Got everybody. We have four now. Okay, very well. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. No, I was looking for my, I've been marking up an agenda. If anyone needs an agenda, by the way, we have a few extras up here.
Found mine.
Moving right along. It is now 7:22 PM. And it's the application of Nigel Curtis, property of 23,848 square feet located at 393 Cranberry Hole Road in Amagansett, Tax Map Number 300-128-01-28.2, to allow an approximately 185-foot GeoCube sandbag revetment and a five-foot-by-10-foot pedestrian walkway extension to remain on a parcel of land containing barrier dunes, beaches, dune land and beach vegetation. The relief sought is a natural resources special permit pursuant to Section 255-4-20 of the Town Code and a variance from Section 255-3-85 of the Town Code. That's the coastal erosion overlay district regulations and any other relief necessary from the Town Code as may be required to allow coastal erosion control structure to remain where the installation of a new coastal erosion structure is prohibited. And this is in a residential, a residential AE flood zone, an elevation of nine feet. AE flood zone elevation 12 feet. It's an unlisted SECA class. And counsel, do we have proof of service, proof of posting?
We do have the affidavit, service and posting. I just want to point out that the applicant has informed me that the receipts, they haven't received them back from their Montauk post office, seems to be having some issues right now, so they're just waiting for the receipts. But I do have the affidavit of service and posting, and they did get some of their green cards back, so I do believe the board has jurisdiction to move forward with the hearing.
Should we leave, do we leave the record open for that, or?
Yeah, I mean, we can.
Okay, very well.
You should get them, right? Oh, I talked to Joel. He said he should get them in the box. Yeah.
Well, I don't think formally we need to leave the record open for that.
No, you can say that when they get them, they'll submit it.
Okay, that'll be, when, when those come in, those will be submitted by the applicant. Okay, and once again, in John's absence, Chairman Whalen's absence, I did the field report, so if we can... I'm not sure where they hit it. Lower, lower right, I think. There we go. Is that, that's it? Okay, all right. That's right on Cranberry Hole Road. The posting is there. Next picture is looking, what would that be, east or north, I guess, on Cranberry Hole Road? And then looking south on Cranberry Hole Road, and the next one will be across the street on Cranberry Hole Road. And now we go immediately to the back where all the matters involving the application are. That's the stairway that is part of this application, and you can see the revetment. That is looking, again, north slash east along Nappy Carver. And that is, I think, looking at the house from the, from the western, south and western end of the property. And I turned around, I think, no, I'm sorry, I think I'm up at the, at the northeast end of the property, looking now south and west. And next is a tighter shot. You can see the revetment, and you can see that it's covered over by grasses and the fence. Again, looking south, and that's Nappy Carver, obviously on the right side of the screen, next. Again, I've stepped back in showing where the revetment curves at the end of the property. That's the north and east end of the property. And that's in the middle of it. The house is located on the south end of the property, and then there's a considerable amount of the rest of the property, which has got the revetment continuing. That's looking straight on at the property and the house right above it. And that's a close-up of the staircase. And that is looking to the, again, north and east at the house and looking, I think that again is north and east of the house, yes. And that may be it.
That's it.
That's it. Any, any questions from the members?
No.
Okay, very well, counsel.
Good evening, Acting Chairman, members of the board. Richard A. Hammer, I'm here tonight representing Nigel Curtis, who is here with me tonight as well, as well as Aram from First Coastal. I'm going to try and, you know, I'm sort of pinch hitting. I've been working with Nigel for a little while on some of the larger issues that we're going to be discussing tonight, but I wasn't the applicant under the permit. You know, they asked me to be here tonight to help with the discussion, just because I've been a party to a lot of these types of applications in front of the town. Personally, these are the most difficult applications you are ever going to have is sitting on the zoning board of appeals. They're quite literally discussions about the long-term viability of a house. We're not talking about a pool, a garage, you know, side yard setback. This is really goes to the nut of what we're talking about is, you know, how do we solve an issue that's quite larger than, than this room, this house, this problem? You know, I, you know, I can talk for a long time about a garage. This one I would talk infinitely about because it's just so important. So I just want to stress to the board the importance of the discussion we're having tonight and the application pending before you. It's about a house, and I don't know whether it's going to be here next year, in 10 years, next week, or maybe even tomorrow. You know, really, these things are very tenuous under the current situation. The notice for the hearing, you know, when I was first brought on, there was, the TAM hadn't been prepared. The only, so I checked the file, it hadn't been prepared. I think it was just last Monday, the TAM was forwarded to us. You know, it was obviously under development, so we didn't have time to prepare an adequate response, I think, for, to the TAM. But, you know, it, not surprisingly, the TAM raised a myriad of important concerns regarding the applications and, you know, these types of structures in general. You know, some of them we might agree with, some of them we would refute, but I do view tonight as an opportunity for us to begin a discussion of literally what I think is one of the single most important issues affecting this particular stretch of coastline, the sustainability of approximately 30 houses along this stretch of coastline. There are several vacant lots. I didn't take time to actually figure out whether these were buildable or not, but there's approximately 30 houses from the terminus of kind of the old fish factory to the Devon Yacht Club groin field. I do think we should start with the simple and work our way out to the more complex. On the simple side, we're here tonight seeking a variance from the provisions of 255, 385 to construct a coastal erosion structure in an area of town that does not permit coastal erosion, new coastal erosion control structures. The, I was actually available, you know, I was aware of this when it, when it occurred. The CEHA, as it was referred to, was adopted by the town, as I recall, in 2007. This area of the town was placed in Zone 2 based on the absence of existing coastal erosion control structures. I think there are some exceptions along the coastline. Brian would probably be more familiar with them than I are. However, based, you know, even in the planning department's own analysis, it documents a loss of 44 feet of protected dune land. You know, one thing that Brian didn't say is the timeframe that he was looking at it for, over. I assume it was from 2007? Couldn't really tell. It just says over this time period from 2001. But I did look at the historical aerials, and it looked to me like this property had lost about 110 feet of protected dune in front of it since about 1962. I'm sure Aram can, can more zero in on it. But that's pretty consistent with the loss of several feet of protected beach a year. That would lead one to question why this property and this entire area was placed into coastal erosion Zone 2, which prohibited new coastal erosion control structures. You know, clearly it was chronically eroding when the law was adopted in 2007, had been for decades leading up to that. I would say that it certainly wasn't because the town had a long-range solution that was being implemented to address that. Basically, it was put in there, and I would probably survive in the best possible case. It was placed so that the town could minimize the extent of the relief sought in this zone. I think anyone at this time thought the issue was simply wouldn't arise, it's just preposterous. If you look along this whole stretch of beach, these properties are not that deep, and there were a lot of houses in place. So if you project three feet a year, two feet a year, whatever it is, you know, we were quickly going to come to be in front of this board tonight. For Nigel, at least, it is tonight. There are quite a few that are similarly improved with structures that are easily viewed. If you look at the aerial photo, you can see other properties that have sandbags, other types of erosion control measures that have been implemented. But under the law, the way it works is the zoning board is the agency that would approve and hear a variance for an NRSP and issue an NRSP in a variance for these structures. It was pretty much already known that we would be requesting some form of relief on this property absent some large comprehensive solution. It just wasn't known exactly when we would be here tonight. I will guarantee that unless we take a more long-range view of these issues, pretty much all of the adjacent properties will be in front of you appearing for more permanent relief from the Town Code to protect their houses before they're obviously consumed by the bay. I did also want to state emphatically that the trustees do not own the beach or have any interest in the beach on this property. That was handled in front of the trustees. It was definitively established during title review, and it was agreed to by the trustees, so.
When did your client take title?
The DEC has already issued a permit for the sandbags to remain. That should be in your board's file.
As a permanent measure?
What's that?
The DEC, the DEC issued that as a permanent measure?
Well, a sandbag, that's an interesting question. Sandbags are not permanent measures.
Yeah, that's why I'm trying to...
You know, it was, it was issued by the DEC to provide a measure of protection, but I don't think anybody would consider a sandbag, revetment, or whatever the structure is as permanent. So we're here to talk about a more permanent, you know, the idea behind what would be a permanent solution here. I do think it's interesting to note that this is not really a public beach other than mean high water, as defined in New York State, because the trustees don't have title. It's a long history. I believe this property and all these properties were one time owned by a former trustee who deeded them to, excluded the beach because he was claiming, or, you know, there's a long history that came out in the trustee.
What is it, actually, you're here before? Are you requesting that these sandbags be here as a longer-term temporary feature?
I think that is...
Until you figure it out, or what are we, what are you exactly here for?
Well, I, I think that's what we're here to discuss tonight. Why are we here tonight at all? We're here tonight because we need immediate protection to this structure, and frankly, the sandbag is not a solution to this issue. It's, it's a placeholder that's going to be able to provide some measure of protection while we work out the larger issue.
But most of the sandbag is nowhere near, not nowhere near, but it's not protecting the structure directly. I mean, just look at that picture right there. There's a pretty long stretch of sandbag underneath all that grass before you actually get to the structure. So how is it that that sandbag under the grass protects the structure?
Well, I'll, I'll let Aram address the more engineered aspects of that.
Okay, fine, fair enough, fair enough.
You know, I'm trying to do kind of the big issues. You know, it certainly is interesting. I don't know if you've been following the papers. Just last week, there was a long court decision on the Mount Talk Sound View that said the town is liable. I don't know how that fits in or if it has any relevance here.
It's being appealed, by the...
I do think that the plaintiffs would consider that a victory. It's just an interesting case that these issues continue to be thorny issues that are going to be around a very long time. That one might even be harder to solve than, than the current issue in front of us. What we're here to ask you for tonight is what's deemed an area variance under our Town Code. As you're aware, the variance standards demand the board find that the benefits to the applicant outweigh the detriment to the general health, welfare of the general public, and we have to request the minimum variance necessary and adequate to eliminate the, to allow us to eliminate the difficulty requiring us to ask for, request an area variance as well as protect the general health, welfare and safety. I would requestfully submit, we do meet this discussion, this, this standard based on the discussion I hope we have tonight. You know, I would say Mr. Curtis is here with me tonight. He hasn't buried his head in the proverbial sand by requesting this approval. Frankly, if we had more sand to bury your head in, we'd probably put it in front of the, the structure, because that's really where it's valuable and needed. But he's committed to the big pictures, you know, the big picture solution here, which we think can only be in erosion control district, beach nourishment, sand, you know, and dune reconstruction. That effort would be greatly aided by the removal of the shore hardening structures that appear directly to the east of this structure, kind of around the point, which we, you know, I'm sure Aram will explain, that's partially why this area of sand, of the beach is eroding, is because there's interference with the long shore transit. I think we need to have a comprehensive effort along the shoreline to have any of its intended effect of protecting and, and protecting this area that's currently threatened with erosion.
Right, but that would be outside the purview of this board.
Well, that's, but I think we're going to be in front of this board when we get to the, you know, certainly you're going to be an involved agency when we get there. We, we should start the discussion right now. I don't think a single property owner can have much of an impact on a regional problem. What I think we would realistically ask this board for is the variance we're requesting could be term limited to a period of years to allow us to put in place the infrastructure necessary to pursue this long-term solution, which Mr. Curtis can speak to his discussions with the neighbors and the overwhelming support that we're getting at that level. We've developed some of the preliminary documents that we use to go to the town board. I've done a few of these special districts. It's a cumbersome, long process, and it's going to involve several permitting agencies.
But just help us understand that, because, because there was an emergency permit that was, correct me if I'm wrong, that was given to, for this, for this sandbag revetment.
That's correct.
And there's a time limit to that?
The emergency permits are issued for six months, which allow you to maintain the structure for a six-month period. I think Aram can probably address, you know, the viability of that permit and that timeframe, but we believe that we need a longer-term protection while we can address...
But it, but as, but as I'm reading what our project description and the relief that you're requesting is, you're, you're requesting the, the sandbags to remain, and if we do that, that would, we're, it'd be like we're saying that's in perpetuity. So I, I think there needs to be a clarification of what's being requested.
Well, the board, the board has the ability to condition a grant of a variance on anything, and one very viable way for you to do that is to grant a variance for a term of years. It's been done, most notably, I can think of three or four cases where you say, okay, we're going to grant you a variance, it's going to... It's going to have an expiration date on it and it would be, you know, what we would request and what would really allow us the opportunity to really pursue and seek all our approvals is about a five-year term. At the end of that five-year term, the variance is no longer in effect. The sandbags would have to be removed. We're hopeful that at the end of that five-year term, they're not going to, no longer going to be needed because at that point, we're going to have a sand replenishment that is going to address all of the issues these sandbags were designed to, to address on the short term.
But that's not what the application actually says, is it? For a five-year term? I mean, that's, you're kind of coming up with that.
I think he's saying that could be a.
Yeah, the board, you know, we're requesting it to be permanent. You can grant anything between perpetuity and tomorrow. So we, I would like you to consider, you know, and, and maybe it's time for me to turn this over to Arum in some respects, just so you can get an idea of the comprehensive breadth of what actually needs to happen and why this variance term would make some sense in terms of pursuing these approvals.
My only issue with it is, is, I'd like to know what you're asking for. I mean, it's almost approaching like an advisory, putting us into an advisory role, which I don't know we.
Well, it's not really an advisory role.
No, I'm not saying it's precise, but it's shading towards.
I do think a, a term of years variance would, would, you know, based on all the concerns that we all have, the shared concerns raised by Brian as well, we do not want this to be a permanent solution. It's not designed to be a permanent solution, but it is protecting that structure while we work out the larger details. And, and if five years is something the board would consider, I think that would be a reasonable term limit for us to actually implement our solution.
Yeah, I want to hear what Brian thinks about that.
Yeah, all our variance is run with the land forever, so I don't.
Well, he's saying, he's saying they don't necessarily have.
That's absolutely, you know, I, I, you don't encounter these often, but they, you can in fact have a term variance. It's been done several times in the past that I remember, so I'm certainly happy to speak with the council about that outside of the meeting, but that was one idea I came up with in terms of mitigating this. You know, you're looking to mitigate an adverse impact or a potential for adverse impact and the permanent nature of it is probably the largest single adverse impact. So if we can somehow reduce that and understand that this isn't an applicant who wants a swimming pool, this is an applicant who had the ocean, or the bay, as it were, was up to the back door and, and I'm sure Arum can explain that. I wasn't involved at that point, but I think it's important for you to understand the severity of the erosion that this was facing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Arum.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Arum Turcuni and I'm a coastal geologist with First Coastal Corporation in West Hampton Beach, New York. I've been practicing in, on and around East Hampton beaches for about 35 years. I prepared a PowerPoint presentation for us to look at tonight because I thought that the best way for us to introduce this situation to you was, was to place it into context. And, you know, this, as Andy said, you know, this is a very difficult situation and it's not going to be solved on a parcel-by-parcel basis. It's going to be solved on a more regional basis. And when I was first brought into this project, which is almost, it's a year ago, we started looking at, you know, how are we going to, how are we going to deal with what's going on? So what we did was we studied it.
How long is the PowerPoint?
I think it's 17 slides. Largely pictured. Almost all.
If you could just move a little.
Yeah, we still have the planning department after this, so if you would give us courtesy of the short version.
They have the hard copy and.
This is the hard copy of that.
I feel most of our dialogue is going to be between owner and planning department.
So this is an aerial view. I think this is important to look at it. I mean, it looks beautiful on this beautiful day, but we have some serious problems. Our location is right in this area here, the project location. This is the former fish factory. There's actually town-owned land right here where there's a current aquaculture operation underway. This is the state park and you can see just by looking at this, there's a huge pile of sand right there. And quite frankly, that's our problem because that sand, by nature, is supposed to be here. And it's all been stopped by the improvements at the fish factory. And when we went back and looked at this, it becomes very, very obvious. So longshore transport, littoral transport is to the west, to the south and to the west. This is the old fish processing factory and here's what's happening. We looked at aerial photos going back to 1962 and you can see that this is all sand that's been accreted in this area since 1962. And then the red is all the sand that's been lost in that same period of time. So what we have is, if you will, a classic jetty inlet situation without the inlet. The sand is, that sand is transported to the south and to the west. It's being trapped up in this location. It's being eroded here. And in between this, this is essentially a hardened headland where not yielding any sediment at all. This is what the boat basin, the boat slip looked like in 2016, but it's important to see what it looked like previously. You can see even as recently as 2001, it was only partially filled in. But in 1962, these are very deep water berths for these ocean-going vessels that were bringing in, I believe, Menhaden here to be processed. So this is our problem. This caused the entire system to be thrown out of equilibrium. So how do we put it back into equilibrium? Well, this is what the result is. This is an unprotected dune in that area this past March. And still photos are good, but really, if this would work, it'd be great. Well, I have a very nice video for you here. You know, these waves that are rolling in here have a lot of force. It may be a bay and not the ocean, but these are three, four-foot waves.
Well, it's your northeast exposure too.
Yeah, and, and no sand. And you can see here in the background, this is basically, that's the fish factory. Here's the new, the current aquaculture operation. This whole area has got no beach at all. It's basically a hardened shoreline. And this is hundreds of feet between the birthing slip all the way down here. It's about 500 or 600 feet. Let's go next. Don't want to do that. Oh, there we go. Okay, so this is just a short three-year period of time. This is 2015. Yeah, there's some erosion. It doesn't look so bad. Keep your eye on this bush and that house. Within a year, that whole pine tree is gone, completely undermined. A year later, it's past the stairs right at the corner of the foundation of the house. That's the speed at which this is occurring. Over the period of time we looked at from 62 to 2016, the erosion rate was only about two and a half feet a year. You know, Brian's analysis was from 01 to the present, it's 2.8. If we shrink that timeframe, this, this erosion rate's going up almost to five feet a year. So an unprotected dune and doing nothing spells catastrophe for this entire stretch. Mr. Curtis is just one of the first in that line. On top of that, we have, these are the projected sea level rises that New York State has issued through their Community Risk and Resiliency Act. This is now part of New York State codified regulation and they give in the 2050s for Long Island, median projection is 16 inches. So we need to incorporate sea level rise into any solution we have as well. So what are our alternatives? Very simply, beach nourishment, do nothing, accommodation, raise the house up on piles and let the water come through, protection, put in some type of structure which stops the land from being eroded, or retreat, take these buildings, move them back. We've been going through these, not just for Mr. Curtis, but on a bunch of properties. Doing nothing will be catastrophic. The house will go, the dune will go, the sanitary system will go, and it's all going to happen in a very short period of time. Accommodation, just raising the house up on piles, that does nothing to reinforce the dune and prevent the erosion and the flooding that's occurring. Protection, we know is an uphill battle. Retreat is not feasible, is not enough depth on this property. We can move the house at the end of the day, maybe 20 feet. What are we buying, three, four years? That, that's not really feasible. So we get up to beach nourishment. Well, how do you do beach nourishment? Well, beach nourishment, we've done a bunch of these projects. This is a big one. This is a $25 million, six-mile project in Sagaponica Bridge Hampton. Essentially, we bring in high-quality sand and we enlarge the beach. This, this project was built in 2013. It's at the halfway point of its life. Go down to Sag Main Beach, walk around. It just got named the best restored beach in America. Beach restoration is working really, really well here.
That was done with the dredges that were offshore?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a pretty cool process.
So this is what it looks like before and after. Just a little snapshot view so you can get it. But beach restoration is not just for the ocean. Sammy's Beach. In 2010, pre-nourishment, they needed to dredge a whole bunch of three-mile harbor. And so what they do with that, they use that material for beach restoration and they built this whole beach out at Sammy's Beach. That whole beach at Sammy's Beach is all artificial. It's all material that gets dredged out of the harbor. Well, that's 2012, what's it look like today? Not bad. In 2017, five years later, the beach is still doing pretty well. So this is a technique which is widely used. It's all throughout the United States, throughout the world and right here on the east end, both on the ocean and on the bay. So this is the area that we're looking at.
Where's the house?
The house is right here, I think. Yes, this is it, right here.
Thanks.
Yep. So this is the area we're looking at. We're looking at doing an erosion control district. This has become a very viable vehicle for doing it. We just got one approved in Southampton in North Sea Harbor on the Pecanic Bay. We've had preliminary conversations with the town supervisor. He expressed interest and encouraged us to provide a proof-of-concept document, which we are in prep doing. But we have to survive between today and when we can implement a project like this. And having done four or five of these, I can tell you that it basically takes five years. It's going to take us five years to get our proof-of-concept, to hold our public hearings, to go through those public hearings, and then once, even once the erosion control district is approved, you have to have a feasibility plan. That plan has to go through environmental review. You have to get your permits. Then once you have your permits, you have to contract it. Once you contract it, you have to build it. Takes five years. So we need interim protection and that's why we're in front of you because if we do nothing, there's going to be a catastrophic loss. There's no question. It will happen. The geotextiles, including the geotubes, are an appropriate interim measure. They're recognized in the code as a temporary emergency measure, but they're also been used in areas for periods of time up to and including five years. They're not a permanent solution. They're not a permanent solution for a couple of reasons. Number one, they're not durable enough. These are geosynthetics. Once they get exposed to the sun, they start breaking down right away. You break down with the sun and the ultraviolet, with the abrasion from wave impact, the structure is going to come apart on its own. So they're not a permanent solution. And they're also not a permanent solution is we have to restore the sand balance here that the fish factory has messed up for the last five, six, eight decades. And in order to correct something that took us 80 years to get here, we're going to need some time to do that. And this measure that's in front of you, I believe is appropriate. I think it will do what it needs to do and, and result in, in a, in a good project and, and, you know, healthy, a healthy situation. And I'll just go back to you, you know, this is, you know, this is not a terrible thing. Yes, there's a, there's a sandbag structure inside there, but this was, this was built in March. It was filled and planted in April and it's still there this week or last week, whenever.
Saturday afternoon.
Saturday, when, when to look at it. So is it, is this what we, this is what we want it to look like eventually anyway, but we've got to have time to get to that solution.
And what happens if the beach erosion control district never becomes a reality?
This board still controls. It's, you know, if, if you issue, as, as counselor said, a time-limited variance, eventually the applicant has to come back to you.
For another.
For, for something, for something, whatever it is.
Members, any questions? No. Like to hear from, I guess it's Mr. Frank from the planning department?
Good evening, board members. Brian Frank, chief environmental analyst for the, for the town. Familiar with Cranberry Hole Road. I've worked on a lot of those properties over the years for various purposes. And I think it's important to bear in mind that the erosion out there is not uniform along Cranberry Hole Road. The hotspot, as it is, is really in the eastern section, kind of in the area of the applicant's property. And I also think it's important to recognize that you will never see this sandbag revetment look better than it looks in this photo right here. This is not really an accurate representation of what this is going to look like on a year-round basis, especially if Arum's estimates of the erosion rate are correct. Arum was a little off about his, his timeframe. This revetment was constructed at the end of January and it wasn't buried until at, at least sometime in early June. The last time I had been there and it was exposed was May 29th. The entire C-word side of it was exposed. And I have some, some photos going back to its installation in June that I'll, I'll, I'll show you in a moment.
By exposed, you mean plastic bags full of sand?
Yeah, yeah. Yes. This is, you know, Andy opined as to why this area was located in coastal erosion Zone 2, if there was an erosion problem there. A lot of what the town's regulations are, are intended to do are to protect the beach, to manage the resource. The town code emphasizes the importance of beaches in numerous places and, and makes that emphasis very, very strong. There are, I, I included a couple of excerpts in the code. I have a copy of the erosion control regulations as they apply to, I'm sorry, a copy of the natural resource regulations that were developed specifically for erosion control structures because the proliferation of erosion control structures was such a significant concern for the town. The town code identifies beaches as the signature of the town and without me using hyperbole, uses the language that they are the most, perhaps the single most important economic assets of the town. That's what defines the town. This area represents about 7,000 square feet of predominantly unarmored bayfront beaches and that is the definition of coastal erosion Zone 2, where new erosion control structures are prohibited. That area goes from the boat basin up on Bendigo Road at the Devon Yacht Club and extends about to the fish factory that Arum mentioned in, or maybe not the fish factory, but just west of there. In that area, there are no hard structures with the exception of one address a few hundred feet away where there's an old panel-style vertical bulkhead and that house is essentially on the beach. The adjoining property to the east of this has had a sandbag revetment that has far exceeded its permits since about 2013. And that revetment, if you take a look at aerial photos, and I have some that I, that I can show you, that revetment went right around the house, not across the entire property. And I think that's important when you're, when you're looking at this application because the problem with erosion control structures, and this has been found repeatedly over and over, it results in accelerated erosion in front of the structures and it results in flank or scour erosion at either end. And that erosion at either end and in front makes both the subject property and the adjoining properties more vulnerable to erosion. And then those adjoining properties need some type of structural protection as well. And this domino effect proliferates and results in extensive areas of, of beach loss. And that was the town's concern when they adopted, when they developed the LWRP and when they adopted the town's erosion regulations in 2007.
Brian, is there validation to Arum's assessment that these beaches are scoured as a result of the, the fish factory?
That may be a factor. I think, I think the jury is still out on that, what, what the cause is and regardless of, and, and what the cause is frankly, right now, is a little bit beyond what, what the board can do with it. The board's issue at the moment is what, what to do about this property. And the, and the bottom line issue for this property is, does this application, does this action meet? action meet the natural resource special permit regulations that were specifically developed for erosion control structures? And does it meet the variance standards of the town code? And if you go through those standards one by one, i- it's pretty clear that it does not. And that, and that's unfortunate. There is a serious situation here.
It doesn't in the sense that it's exceeded its allowable...
That's even a separate, that's even a separate issue. It would not meet those standards even if it were, even if it was designed...
There was a permit, there was a temporary permit.
That's correct.
Emergency permit granted.
That's correct. This application was originally submitted in the winter of, uh, 2017, and the application essentially remained somewhat dormant, um, not a lot of activity. I had spoken to, um, Andrew Baird in Arum's office a couple of times about my concerns about the application and about some alternatives that I would encourage them to explore. There wasn't really any action. Um, uh, an emergency building permit was issued by the building department in September of, um, of 2017. And under the emergency provisions of the town code, it does allow for the temporary use of sandbags up to six months with a three-month extension. So from the date of the issuance, we're already beyond that nine-month window now. But the intent of that was to put a Band-Aid on a problem to prevent somebody from losing their house while a more long-term solution was developed, ideally before the end of that six or nine-month period, not, not coming to you at, at the, at the end of it here.
What, what are the alternatives that you've suggested?
Well, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get through the, coming up with the alternatives are really part of, um, the, the applicant's responsibility more than the town's.
But adjusting that six, nine-month period of time, you know it's unrealistic in this town to get a permanent solution or a much more, much more satisfied solution for this area within that timeframe. So that's an unreal, is that, is that not unreasonable?
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it's not unreasonable. The condition at this property, you heard both Andy say that this has gone on for decades, and you heard Arum say that, that this has gone on for a long period of time. The applicant bought this property in 2015, and part of the variance standards is that a self-created difficulty. And was there any diligence on the part of the property owner prior to buying this property? I have a, a survey that I'll show you. This is a survey of, from, um, 2017... Uh, I'm sorry, 2015. These were the environmental conditions about the time that the, um, property owner bought the, um, property. You can see that, that the doom crest is already about eleven feet from the deck. It was already, um, a, a, a rough situation. And we've gotta break this cycle of going back and, and, and finding culprits that are fifty-six, seventy, a hundred years old to say, because of something that was done there, we have to do something that is similarly damaging to the resources now out of, out of necessity.
I don't disagree, but would, would there be a common ground bound in a longer-term situations if our beaches are, if our beaches are our primary resource?
Well, that's, that's part of what you have to, to look at here, whether, um, you, you know, I, I had kinda planned to kinda flow through some of these things, uh...
Why don't you do that?
Um, but I, I don't mind jumping around a little bit. I just get concerned that I'm going to, um, forget something.
Okay.
Um, anyway, this, this is the condition of the property in 2017. Um, these are photos from, um, January, um, this is from January 26th. This was when the revetment was under construction. I had been in the area for other reasons. There's another row of sandbags that are, are buried under here. These are, these are Geo cubes. They each weigh about, uh, you know, fifteen hundred pounds each. And although they're geotextile bags, and they don't last forever like rock, don't, don't avoid the fact, or don't overlook the fact that physically in the environment, this functions just like a stone revetment does. Maybe even more like a bulkhead since it's a little bit more vertical, but, you know, to be honest, the difference between a, a sloped rock wall of this size and a vertical bulkhead seems to be somewhat nominal based on what I've seen on, in, in areas like this. But, but this is a hardened structure. This is a structure that will result, will result in loss of the beach in front of it. And from, um, the end of January through at least the beginning of May, remember, we had that series of, of nor'easter, it seemed like on a weekly basis in, in March and April. Scour erosion at both the eastern and western ends were evident, um, pretty much after every, every storm. I ha, I have some other photos here. This is, um... This is what the revetment looked like in, uh, the beginning of, uh, March. And this is during, um, I, I think this is pretty close to a full moon tide, but this is what, this is the loss of resource. There is essentially no beach here. Even if you take a look at Vice Chair Kramer's photos or, um, Arum's photos of the beach in the summer now, when the beach arguably is at its most stable and building up, if you go back and take a look at them, they're gonna be in your file, I'm sure. Take a look at where the rack line is. Take a look at where the rack line is in Member Kramer's photos. You'll see the stairs that are out here. There's really about only five feet of beach before you see the seaweed line. You have a loss of resource. And again, this is what the town's regulations against coastal erosion structures are intended to prevent, the permanent and irretrievable loss of resource. And if you have this thing sitting here for the next five years, I don't see how you're going to mitigate those impacts over that time period. And that's, that's the question for the, for the board tonight. Can this thing be introduced into the envi, in the environment in a way that's benign, whether it's for one years, three years, five years, or indefinitely? And I'm gonna respectfully offer you that the answer is no. I'm going to suggest very strongly that the odds of this structure being exposed again by the end of October of this year, as soon as we start to get in our stormy period, is very, very high. I, I think conservatively, over ninety percent, probably close to a hundred percent. I'm curious about Arum's opinion about this. But once we get our first series of, um, rough water, whether, y- you know, hurricanes start having an effect on our beaches, whether they make landfall or not. There are plenty of storms that stay out in the Atlantic that result in, in high-water conditions and beach loss.
Surfers coming and surf Garnet's Island.
Well...
Back a lot.
So are, are you saying that all that grass that I took those pictures of, that's all gonna go away?
I'm saying all the grass in front, on the, on the north side of it, will absolutely go away. I've observed what has happened with the revetment, with the similar revetment on the property next door. Again, I, I think that is a much more dire situation, um, than, than this property was.
Why?
Because I had been there in 2013 where there was absolutely no doom. Um, and that, you know, that, that's a separate property. I don't wanna conflate that much, but it is relevant to say that we've seen what has gone on, on the property right next door. The same beach, the same area, the same coastal processes, and it has not been benign. What has minimized the damage from that structure at least, and maybe I should move to an aerial photo. I don't know if I have one that has, oh, I hope I, I brought one.
Brian, while you do that, uh, though, you, you are in agreement with the presentation that the, uh, the coastal, uh, creep is considerable, uh, it's happening every year by two to three feet?
Um, well, I, I, I feel, I, I feel confident measuring on aerials that I, I know are accurate and not grainy. If you're trying to do feet per year, when you go back to the seventies, when you go back to the sixties, where you place the cursor will have a lot of influence as to your measurement. And when you're talking about feet per year on an individual property and not a long stretch of shoreline, that can be a little bit more forgiving. I, I think it's hard to be accurate. So I felt confident in the, in the 2001 aerials, and I, I, I think I can show you what I, what I used. There's an erosion problem here. There's no doubt about it, whether it has something to do with the, with the fish factory or other factors, again, has less to do with the short-term solution than what you're really looking at, and that's whether you should be granting this permit.
What is, but what is the solution by removing the bags now? If it does take, in any scenario, retreat or any scenario, at least two years for approval, two to five years for approval? So if we remove those bags today, where, what's, what's happening with the house?
Yeah, what happens if those bags go?
Well, you know, some of the things you have to look at are, are the use of sand, non-structural restoration without the bags. Um, you do have to make, you have, you do have to take a look at making alterations to the residence. I, I think, you know, um, both A- Arum and, and Andy touched on something fairly poignant...
Alterations to the residence will take two years to get here.
Putting it on pilings or making those type of changes, a redevelopment is not gonna, in my opinion, should not take two years. Not, not, not for something like this.
How do you feel about the whole idea of the coastal, um, I forget the, the, the name that they gave it, the, the district that they were suggesting?
Coastal erosion districts really need to come from the people that they're affected by. So that, 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 that's a, that's a separate track. I, I don't think it gets the board off of a, addressing what, what to do now. It, it may be relevant to a short-term variance, but you're going to have adverse environmental impacts while this thing is on the beach.
But if they're really asking for a short-term variance while they pursue this coastal erosion district, what, what's your issue with that?
You don't have any assurance that it's going to happen. I think that it, it, it is poignant to point out that, that we are, that sea level rise is a reality, and most scientists agree that climate change is a reality. The effectiveness of, um, of a coastal erosion district, while I, I certainly encourage it to be explored, is yet to be unproven. There, there may not be the, the abundance of an offshore source like there is at Sagaponica, like there is in, in other places along the ocean, where that's where the sand comes from. You know, you, you have literally millions of yards of cubic, cubic yards of sand to place on the resource. That is a, a much different challenge on, um, on the bay beaches. Taking, taking sand from the inlet like they did, uh, at, um, at, at Sammy's Beach and like they do when they do inlet dredging responsibly, putting it on the downdrift beach, that's the right thing to do. I wouldn't call Sammy's Beach artificial. That's where the sand would go if, if there was no inlet there. But, but that, that's, that's a, a much smaller volume of sand. That sand needs to get removed out of the inlet anyway. Um, when you don't have that resource here, where that sand comes from are all things that I'm sure they're going to explore, and that's gonna factor very, 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 very large into the cost of bringing sand to the property is, is where it comes from and how you get it there.
Brian, this, this photo is kind of compelling to me. Um, if you look at the photos of the house for tonight's presentation, it looks like, I mean, that house is definitely seaward than some of the other houses in the neighborhood, right? That's the house?
The, this one over here?
Yeah, who's, that's, is this the applicant's house?
No, this is not. This is the applicant's house.
That's the applicant's house.
This is the one to the east where, again, they have, this revetment went right around the house. The, the Curtis revetment goes across the entire property, which I think is problematic for whether it's the minimum variance.
Is that, yeah, let me ask you, is that, I'm sorry. Is that your issue?
Well, my question, does, does that revetment, the way it is, ca, cause potential harm to other properties near it?
Exactly.
North or south or...
Yes. Yeah, I, you could see scour at the ends of, of, of the revetment, um, throughout the spring, after, after each storm.
So would you have fewer problems with the revetment if it just covered the area where the house is?
Well, before the emergency permit was issued, one thing I was discussing with, with First Coastal would have been, um, something buried right around the house with sand nourishment in front of it, so that if all the sand were removed, the bags would be the last line of the fence.
And then what, what happens to the rest of the property?
Um, the beach goes and the beach comes, and you're, you're gonna have to replenish sand there. And again, it i, it is a little bit stopgap with, um, with an erosive situation, with sea level rise, with climate change, digging in and trying to protect the house where it is, a house where the lower level doesn't meet FEMA, is not a sustainable solution. Any more than a long-term erosion control structure here is not a sustainable solution if you wanna protect the resource as well. You can protect the house, or you can protect the resource. It's very, very difficult to do both simultaneously. It's not a magic bullet out there.
That house looks like it's rel, recently renovated, is it not? Or did it...
According to the building department history, there, there were, um, there were, um, significant renovations, including the lower level shortly after the...
Did it require an NRSP?
No, they were all interior. I don't know the nature of the lower level resor, um, the lower level renovations. The lower level is below the FEMA height, so whether it's a, what, what's down there, I don't know. I didn't, I didn't get that far.
The X area looks like it's been renovated too.
Um, generally, reshingling or, or, um, reciting a house does not need a natural resources permit. But you have a copy of the building department history in, in the file. If you want the individual permits and, and the plans that are associated with them, we can get them. But you have the, the, kind of the, the punch list of what permits were issued on what date for what activities. And this, this is a problem that, that predates the owner's acquisition of the property in 2015. And that does, that should factor into the board's evaluation as to whether it's a self-created difficulty or not. Part of your erosion control standards is erosion control structures are supposed to, um, you're supposed to evaluate the feasibility of a coastal restoration. If this thing can be buried and, and benign in the environment by keeping it buried with sand, then it, you should be able to put sand there without the sandbags out in that location that they are now. The DEC permit required this to be removed by April 15th if it was exposed for more than thirty days in a row. This was exposed from the time that it was installed at the end of, um, January until at least the beginning of, uh, June.
So the DEC permit was not a permanent, the permit was not a permanent...
It, 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 it doesn't reference, it doesn't reference, um, I, I, there's probably a ten-year expiration date on it.
Oh, okay.
But they, the, one of the permit conditions specifically, if it's exposed, if, if, if it's exposed, it needs to be covered within thirty days of being exposed and planted. If they can't do that, they were supposed to remove it by April 15th. If this is as erosive as Arum is characterizing, there's no way they're gonna be able to keep this thing buried. There are no way, there's no way to keep the structure from, from interacting with the shoreline. It's not in the photo, but the property to the, to the west is not in much of a, a better shape. I, I don't know if you, if you noticed that when you were out. I'm sorry, I didn't, I, I should have prepared kind of a little bit more of a, of a zoomed-out view here of, um, the, the neighboring properties to put this in perspective.
I think I've got one or two shots that, that go toward the...
We gotta Google ours. We can go to...
So Brian, we keep knocking you off your...
That's, that's right there.
But I'm still interested in the short and long-term solutions that you, uh, were considering alternatives.
Well, remember, remember what your variance standards are, and that's what you're gonna have to make a finding for. And to paraphrase the variance standards, you're gonna have to make a determination that this is the minimum variance necessary. You're gonna have to make a determination that the situation that led to the need of this variance is not self-created. You're gonna have to determine that there is an absence of environmental impacts and that the benefit to the applicant outweighs any detriment to the town. And knowing what you know about what the impacts of the structure is, is likely to be, I don't know how you could make that finding. You also are gonna have to make a finding that, um, that this project is consistent with the LWRP. And we don't talk about LWRP consistently, ver, consistency very often in zoning board applications because a lot of times it's moot. The, the, the town, the town's coastal policies are adapted from the state policies, and they rarely are relevant when you're talking about residential construction. So even if you were talking about a swimming pool one foot from a wetland that you have no intention of granting a variance for, to tie that to, um, state coastal policies that have more to, that, that take a look at, at bigger issues is, is rarely relevant. You, you rarely need to do that. This is an application where you're gonna have to look at the LWRP. You're gonna have to take a look at the coastal consistency, um, uh, assessment that the planning department prepared and either agree with it or disagree with it. The LWRP is pretty clear that there should not be a proliferation of erosion control structures in this area of town. And that's exactly what this is, whether it's a big bag of sand or a rock. I, if you got three stacks of them and they weigh fifteen hundred pounds each or seventeen hundred pounds each, you have a hard structure. You have an erosion control structure. Uh, there is no record of a coastal restoration being attempted on this property, not by this owner, not by the prior property owner. In, in terms of alternative, um, A- Arum was in, in the right neighborhood, but I, I do think you're gonna have to take a look at, at making alterations to the, to the structures for the long-term viability of this property, whether it's building a, a new residence in a more landward location on pilings, or, um, uh, that, that's probably a combination of non-structural and, and relocation. In, in the face of sea level rise, in the face of climate change with an erosion rate like this, I don't know that, uh, that there is a, uh, I, I, I think that's something that has to, has to be looked at for the long-term viability of not just this house, but, but similarly vulnerable properties in the town.
How much, how much... How much, how much can it move though? I mean, there wasn't the statement that if they move it 20 feet closer to the, you know, the landward, you'll just have this problem in X number of years down the road?
Well, but they're saying that, but they're asking you for a five-year solution for X number of years down the road now. While they, while they look at something, they're telling you that the revetment is not long-term, that this is temporary. And whether, whether you harden the shoreline temporarily or retreat while the long-term solutions are developed are, are, are something that I, I would very strongly encourage you to evaluate.
I wouldn't think you would retreat and then unretreat.
Well, you wouldn't put the house back.
Once you, once you retreat, that's it.
Um, I'm, I'm not sure about the, the 110 feet from 62. I, I don't know how that, how accurate that is. I didn't look at it. I, I feel confident in, in the numbers that I gave you going back from, from 2001, that that's a, a reasonable estimation of, of the erosion rate. Um, this property belongs in Zone 2. All of our bay beaches that lack, um, a, 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 an extensive number of hardened structures are in coastal erosion Zone 2. And there's a reason that they're pro- that new erosion control structures are prohibited in that area, because they will, they will result in adverse environmental impacts, including impacting adjoining properties. Again, one of your permit standards is that the erosion control structure is not supposed to exacerbate, um, erosion on adjoining properties, and not supposed to result in a diminishment of the resource. And I, 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 I think that, that's impossible given its location.
It's, it seems to me that that's your major concern right now. And to cor- please correct me if I, if I'm focused incorrectly. That the, given the size of the revetment and how it extends beyond the house, that the impact of that revetment is on, the thing that is of chief concern to you is the impact of that revetment on neighboring properties. Am I, am I correct on that?
I wouldn't say that, that's the only chief concern.
Well, no.
But that, that's one of them. That, that, that is one of the major concerns. And, and more than my concern, it, it's your permit standard. You, the, you have to evaluate, you have to make a decision that says, if you're grant, if you're considering granting this, you're going to have to make a finding that this meets the permit standards that were specifically developed for erosion control structures on top of the variance standards, and consistent with the LWRP that says...
The minimum.
Don't, well, no, the LWRP says no, no hard structures in this area. So there is a large body of work to say this is a, a nat- a predominantly natural stretch of beach, and it should stay that way, and you should really explore every alternative before you consider, uh, a hard structure. Um, I, I do want to show you a couple of other, um, photos of, of the, um, property. Uh, a lot of these are in your file already.
Yeah, I, we're, we're getting close to an hour past the, uh, next hearing, and I really don't want to...
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be, uh, I'm going to be very, uh, close to, uh, wrapping up. This is what the property looked like when the, um, application was initially submitted. And a, and a more reasonable alternative at the time would have been installing some type of sandbags right in front of the, you know, excavate out behind the dune and bury the, um, bury the sandbags and still have some type of dune in front of it.
I see. I mean, that picture there clearly shows there was an extensive renovation on the outside of the house, or work done on the outside of the house. So when tracking the, um, the FEMA regulation, a 50% rule, um, is that a, is that a over-time type of track, or?
It, it doesn't extinguish. It is over time. It, it, it is, uh, you know, it doesn't extinguish, where you can do some work and then the clock resets. I don't know the details of, of the renovation.
Is the question, there's not to be answered now?
It, it, it's a legitimate question as to whether this should have triggered bringing the house into compliance with FEMA. I, I will wrap up in the, in the interest of time. Um, but this is just an example of, uh, some of the scour that you saw after what was, by, by relative standards, a, a minor nor'easter. This is, this is what you'll see. This is what will continue. This is in, this is in March. This, this, this revetment had only been installed for probably, what, about five weeks.
Where's that?
This is the, um, western end of the revetment on the applicant's property.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And now this is, this is being filled now. Now, now, obviously, it, it looks great. It's covered with sand and it, and it's got beach grass on it. When Aram says, hey, this, this, this looks pretty good, doesn't it? Well, he's right, but it's not going to stay that way. And I think Aram will be the first to, you know, will have to admit that, um, you know, it's going to look a little bit more like the photo I showed you before by the time November comes around than the photos, um, that reflect the current conditions. And, um, that, that's it.
Anybody have any further questions for Mr. Frey?
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, members of the public, are there any members of the public who wish to be heard on this? Please step up. We'll need your name and address, please.
Good evening, Board. Kevin McAllister. I reside at 26 Indian Wells Highway. I am the founding president of Defend H2O, uh, based in Sag Harbor. Um, I'm a marine scientist by training. I hold a Masters of Science in Coastal Zone Management, excuse me. I pr- uh, practiced specifically in shoreline protection in Palm Beach County for 12 years as an environmental analyst. I have extensive experience in shoreline management. I'm here to basically support staff's recommendations this evening. Um, I will say that both Aram, as well as Brian, uh, brought forward a, a great deal of factual information. Uh, Aram's assessment, uh, with respect to up, up gradient, deprivation of sand or interruption of sand from the old fish factory, uh, I believe is correct. Uh, I spend a great deal of time around this area with my recreation activities, so I, I know the shoreline well. I will share with you, I was, um, as former baykeeper, I think in part instrumental in helping the town advance the LWRP back in, it probably was 99, uh, approximately 1999, to really push for, um, the protection of natural shorelines by identification of these zones and keeping the structures out. Uh, you've heard that ultimately the implications of interaction with energy and, and obviously the, uh, uh, sand influence, um, the effect on shoreline. Uh, Aram's slide, which I use often and cite often, the Part 490, the Environmental Conservation Law, which was, uh, put into effect, uh, February of 2017, is quite alarming. And to put it in perspective, uh, we've looked, uh, saw approximately an inch, uh, rise per decade. So I like to say 40, four inches over 40 years. Uh, I've seen the changes out there. We, we're dealing with them daily. Uh, what we can expect over the next four years is between 11 and 30 inches. That's the medium to high range. I, through my role in trying to sound the alarm on sea level rise, uh, to take proactive action to ensure the integrity of our natural shorelines. Uh, Brian spoke of, obviously, the biological importance. You know, this is, uh, nesting site for horseshoe crabs, shorebirds, uh, you know, the ecology and interaction with waters. And I like to say that ultimately, while we are addressing water quality, if we basically forego natural shorelines, we will have serious implications to the productivity of these bays. Uh, there's no question about that. Public access. I recreate, you recreate. Uh, whether or not, you know, this is a, a stretch of homes where you don't have immediate access, I mean, that's a public resource. So whether I come in at the fish factory and like to take a long walk, um, you have the ability to walk that shoreline, the intertidal zone. That, that is, uh, through the public trust doctrine, which dates back to the founding of this country, that, that is, you know, um, given rights. And, uh, ultimately, we have to be very careful of basically losing this, this access. I will say from my experience, and I, I work all over the county. I've been addressing issues in Nissauqog, Fire Island, um, the North Fork, the, uh, the Conic Bay, that the proliferation of seawalls in all its forms, vertical bulkheads, rock revetments, geo-textiles is coming at an alarming rate. And while we have, uh, regulations, uh, circa 1980s with the DEC, ultimately, uh, you know, the, uh, Coastal Erosion Hazard Act, which, uh, uh, which is paramount, is ultimately protection of those natural features. What I am seeing happen, and you've heard that, uh, permits been issued, uh, the DEC under pressure. And, and, you know, I can, uh, uh, have empathy for, obviously, private property owners that are, you know, seeing this erosion, uh, affect their properties. But the DEC unfortunately is, is issuing these permits and ultimately giving way public resources. And this is, in fact, a death by a thousand cuts. The cumulative impacts over decades will be the loss of the shorelines. You know, I, I feel personally, you know, with respect to, you know, and Br- uh, I'm sorry, Aram talked about an erosion control district. And, you know, I've been weighing in or speaking to these. Uh, I'm certainly aware of the Sagaponic, the North Sea that just got approved. Uh, what is key here is beach-compatible sediments. And that's not only a certainty. And, and while we talk about, uh, allowing a structure to stay in for five years and then we'll lift it once we get an erosion control district, um, you know, this is a complex undertaking. Uh, ultimately, having, uh, adjacent property owners for a meaningful, uh, reach of shoreline, uh, uh, basically commit to the investment of sand. And then again, the question is, is it in fact beach-compatible? If it's fine sediments, uh, it will not last under wave attack. Uh, that beach will erode very quickly and we're back to, uh, zero. So the, the cost implications will always be there. Uh, the, the districts generally, uh, go on s- uh, cycles of five years. Is this a long-term prospect to have this reoccurring investment to, to, again, put sand on the beach? We have a choice that we have to make, and, and this goes back to the LWRP. The intent is to protect natural shorelines, public access, the ecological importance. Uh, with sea level rise, we've, we've got to start really taking a hard line, in my opinion, on the proliferation of these walls. Um, you've heard about the effects, obviously, of the structure itself. Um, Brian described in scour. So don't look at this in isolation of this one property. In short order, uh, the, the adjacent property will be affected, and it will, uh, precipitate another application, another variance to come in and put another structure. And I refer to it as, uh, basically stringing pearls. And I've seen it time and time again in different, uh, locations within these estuaries that, uh, ultimately, one structure, one interference will lead to, to, to another adjacent property owner following suit. So big picture, uh, we've got to be very conscious of that. Uh, I implore the board to really examine this closely, uh, defer to your LWRP, um, hold the line, and let's see if, uh, in fact, um, you know, the erosion control district can, um, get some legs, uh, in the interim. Uh, there is sand that can be put out in front of this property. Um, I will tell you, and, and I, you know, want to refer to the structure itself, and I've seen this with geo-textiles. Uh, what you saw in that photograph is purely cosmetics. Uh, this is a seawall. Any way you shake it, there's a minimal sand, uh, over the top of it. You saw the plantings, um, ultimately, American beach grass. When it drives its roots down, it's seeking moisture. Once it, it starts to hit the fabric, ultimately, it, it is stunted. You will see anemic, uh, uh, beach grasses over the top of the structures. Uh, case in point is downtown Montauk. It's been in the ground for several years now. Take a look at the plants there. They'll never, they'll never dominate. It will not function as a dune, as it's so-called, uh, called. Um, this is a structure, uh, the LWRP calls for a prohibition on the structures within the zone. Let's hold that line. Let's protect these natural shorelines, integrity of, um, of the beaches, and public access. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any ma- members, any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. There's another member of the public who wishes to speak.
My name's, uh, Philip Burkhart. I live at 66 Nunbay Ridge, Ridgefield, Connecticut. I'm not disinterested in that. I was one of the noticed parties, uh, of this hearing, having a lot, a lot, not a house, but a lot across the street, where we have property on the bay. And I would say that it just is kind of an interesting issue with regards to protection today versus protection long-term. So far, nobody's done anything with regards to trying to solve the issue of erosion on the bay. And as pointed out, although Nigel's house is at the most of it, you can see in this last storm in May, I spent a fair amount of time on the bay. You can see, uh, all the way down to just about where what they call the powerhouse or the stack. You can see where it's carved out, and then it moves out a little bit, so it carves out a little bit more. And as you carve up on the upper section, or what I call the most eastern section, more, you're going to see that pushed down, in my opinion. I'm not a scientist, not an environmental engineer. I'm just somebody who's kind of watched what's, what's happened along the way here. And there's been a fair amount of erosion, I would say almost all the way, at least to the powerhouse, maybe past that, over the years. Second thing is, just boating this year, the number of hardscapes that have been allowed to be put up on the eastern, okay, uh, eastern-facing shore of the bay, I would say the same bay, has been, I thought, very interesting. It looks like it's all the way to Akabonic now. The belt, what I call the Belt Cliff, the belt, the belt ha- house always had, had revetment, because they had a big dock all the way that went out there. But it's been allowed now to move around, and I noticed that they've built some type of a, right near the Akabonic end of it, another, you know, another structure all through there to protect, to protect those houses. So, kind of wrestle with the concept that we want to save a natural resource. This natural resource will be Cranberry Hole Road based on the amount of erosion you have. And I'm not sure what the town's going to do at that point. Are you going to, are you going to try and protect that road? You're just going to say, same thing you're saying to the homeowner, okay, just let it go. It's too bad. So, as a, as a person that has property down there, I'm invested in, I admit that. But I think the town has to look at an overall view of it, of how are you going to wrestle with this issue? Curtis has addressed this from the point of view of tried to go out, or he has gone out, not tried. He's gone out to a bunch of the homeowners all along the bay and on the other side, asking people join together to try and fo- uh, focus on this and see if there's a solution that will protect the beach as well as the properties. And that's the first person that's done that, and I think he deserves a, a ti- time period to try and make that active.
Right, but, but with sea level rise, that's, that's another complex issue here.
It, it is a complex issue.
It has to do with, uh, how, how you deal with the...
In, in fact...
Not just the beach structure. We're, we're talking beach structure, but what about the house structure? That has to be dealt with.
No doubt about it. I mean, I'm not saying this is a simple solution. But I am saying if they don't, if they don't get to protect the house, Cranberry Hole's the road's next. And I don't think anybody here is going to tell you, you have a lot of elevation going from, uh, down south of Cranberry Hole Road. That's pretty flat for a long way. Also, my experiences as a non-engineer, non-scientist is, it's not actually the direct hit of the waves hitting the dunes that get us. It's a, it's when we get a rotational structure in the bay that creates a retuction, uh, a rotation, and the water scours the dune and just takes it away. It'll take two or three feet a da- a week. I mean, it just, it's gone. Some of it stopped by the fact that we have Devon, you know, Devon down the way, which was allowed to put bulkheads out. That stops sand. But it's a, a complex issue, no doubt about it, and you don't have a lot of elevation to fool with, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, counsel or however you want to handle it? And if you could, just, I'll respectfully request that you bear in mind that it's getting late, and we've been on this one for over an hour.
I'm going to be two minutes. Nigel Curtis, 393 Cranberry Hole Road. Um, as Mr. Burkhart just, uh, said, I've actively tried to get all of the houses involved in this beach replenishment. I've got a majority. We're on our way to getting that happening. I, I understand that I may have to elevate my house as well. There's several things that, that need to be done here. We need to replenish the beach. We need to get the beach back to where it was. I need to build my house up stronger. You know, I'm prepared to do everything that I need to do to, to get it going, but I just need a little bit of help from, you know, to, a bit of time. That's why we put these bags in. Um, as far as whether the grass will die, there's a house, um, two doors to the east of us that has planted the grass over their geo-bags, and the grass is very healthy. She's on the same line as us. And her, um, her grass is healthy and held in place during the nor'easters this winter. So it does work. We've planted as much grass as we can, as quickly as we can, to try to hold it. And if we have to replenish the, the sand in front of it every winter, uh, every spring, we'll do that.
Which brings me to my question. Why not, that's a beach re- that's, you're ending up doing beach replenishment anyway. Why not take away the structure, the hardened structure, which appears to be the problem, and just do beach replenishment in your time, in your timeframe?
The lady two doors to the east of us, um, went along that course. She, she just put the beach, the, the sand in front of her house. The first big storm, it all washed away, and she said that, she said it was a $30,000, um, sand deposit into the, into the bay. So she then put the, the... So she then put the Geo cubes in, and she's covered it and planted it, and it's survived If we take those bags away, we're going to lose our house. This next winter, we're going to lose our house. We're two foot away from the structure now. We don't have time to jack the house up before the winter, the planning and everything we have to do. If we take those bags away, we lose our house.
How do you feel about limiting the revetment to the area in front of the house rather than the entire stretch of the property?
I don't have an issue with that. I mean, if we have to redo it now and replant, obviously, we won't be able to replant it because the planting season's gone. My thoughts were that we would want to protect as much of the land as possible because it's a natural beauty, it's a beautiful piece of land, so we wanted to protect it. We have about 20 foot of our property that is not covered by that bag, so we figured that the wash would be on that final 20 foot.
How do we get word out to client, people like, who come in and buy a piece of property like this, who are required under the law to do their due diligence on the property?
Yes.
And therefore spend money like you have fixing it up, instead of going right off the bat and doing the proper thing and raising the house and going through that process in the beginning? People, you come here, you buy a pretty piece of property, but, and you're spending money doing it, and now you face with, you know, this. Why not start that process to begin?
I would love to have the answer to that. I wish that, I wish we had realtors, we had lawyers, we had surveyors, we had our banks of surveyors. Nobody mentioned the fact that this was an issue. I know ignorance is not an excuse, but we bought this house in good faith, that hey, we got, you know, we're on the beach, it's beautiful. At some stage, somewhere down the line, we may have to raise our house, we may have to move it back a little bit. We had no idea that we were going to lose nine foot of dunes in the space of two years, which is effectively what we've done. So right in front of our bedroom window, it's, we've lost nine foot. And of course, I don't want the properties next to me to be damaged. And of course, my main aim is that in five years' time, we've got our beaches back, we all have our beaches back. I'd be very happy to take my bags down, very happy to take my bags down and have natural beach. And I think that from the neighbor that was saying that, you know, beach access is an important part of this, there is going to be no beach for them to have access to unless we, unless we, our group of 24 houses replenish that beach and put it back to somewhere where it was between now and 1960. Unless we do that, there's not going to be any beach for anybody to walk on. I'm not trying to build this for myself, I'm trying to build this for the community. It's something that I passionately believe in. I want everybody to be able to enjoy this beach. It's not going to be there in five years' time, nobody's going to be able to enjoy this beach. I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Brian, I just wanted to mention, I've looked through the file, I don't see the TAM in the file, so we'll need a hard copy. No, I'm looking at our official file, so I'll need that. No, I know it was circulated to the membership, but I don't have one.
Just so you know, it's not even, it is an E A F. You're going to, this is an unlisted action pursuant to secret, you're going to have to make a secret declaration, and there was a lot of, there was a lot of, a lot of...
I said TAM, I meant to say E A F.
Okay.
This.
You don't have that.
It's not.
It's not in the file.
It's not in the file.
That means that some of the supporting documentation, the coastal assessment form, the history of the property, the photographs, none of that is in the official file?
It was distributed to us.
Bear with me.
And I, you know, I will apologize to the applicant for having to email it to him a couple of weeks ago. I grossly underestimated the amount of other work I'd be able to do in June when I was in central Islip for the town, and it was zero. I couldn't do anything, so.
It's not here.
Well, I'll make sure you get...
All right, so let's just...
That's a little fuzzy.
This is not that, though.
It's distributed, they're going to put it in the file.
Maybe it looks just, no, this is...
Arm you up.
Just a minute and 12 seconds.
Please, thank you.
I just want to say that in listening to what Brian said, it seems to me that there's a tremendous amount of common ground here. I took a lot of notes and I'm going to get together with him. But what I'd encourage you to do, when you look at this, is this is a with without, in the sense of if nothing happens, the consequences are very severe, and it's not just this house, it's going to be a bunch of houses, and it's going to happen in a very short period of time. It's going to happen in a couple of years.
But the town is very specific. From our standpoint, from a zoning board standpoint, there are specific standards that we have to go to.
Absolutely, and I will work to address those standards to the satisfaction of the board. But I think it's important to understand that no action at all comes with some very serious consequences. And those are the consequences that you should be weighing against what it is we're trying to do. This is not, this is not we're taking a virgin area and attempting to develop it. We have a very serious problem, it's a legacy problem, it was created by somebody else, and we're trying to solve it, and we need to get from here to there. And if we don't get something in between to get us that bridge across...
Let me just correct you. Part of it might be created by something else. We're talking about sea level rise too, and you acknowledge that too. So that's a different animal. So see, what's going to dominate in time, right? So...
What's going to dominate over time is sand supply. Sand supply is 90% of the beach. That's, I'm very confident in my analysis, I've been doing these for a long time.
Not this...
And that fish factory is our problem. And go out there, look at your Google photos, which I was just doing when I was sitting here. Go just zoom in on those Google photos, you may have to walk it. That shoreline is barren of sand, there's old, you know, discarded this, that, and the other thing all over the place. That's the problem. Thank you very much.
Okay. We have nothing else?
Yep.
All right. And with respect to the application at 393 Cranberry Hole Road, Suffolk County Tax Map 300-128-01-28.2, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second?
And the record, and likewise, the record as well.
Concur.
You know, my suggestion was that there are still unanswered questions that were raised by Brian and his T A M, which we received literally a week ago. I would like the opportunity to have the, to have the record left open so we can respond to those, maybe we can find some...
I don't have an issue with, does any members of the board? Okay, in that case, let me withdraw my prior motion.
Would probably be enough for us to address that and have, you know, some discussions with Brian in terms of trying to mitigate some of the issues that were discussed.
So let me withdraw my prior motion and restate it as that I move with respect to 393 Cranberry Hole Road, Amagansett, Suffolk County Tax Map 300-128-01-28.2. Let the public hearing be closed, but the record remain open for 30 days?
Yes.
To allow a response to the E A F.
Second?
Concur. Concur. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All righty then.
Very interesting.
Yeah, well, now we've been on. Okay. All right. It's now 8:48, 8:49. And why don't we wait until the matter gets officially introduced and jurisdictions is identified? This is the 7:30 public hearing, it's now 8:49. The applicant is Safe Harbor Retreat LLC. Size and location, 167,000, 100 square, 160 square feet, located at 26 Bull Run in East Hampton. Tax map number 300-135-01-08. The application is to convert a roughly 3.9 acre property in a residential zoning district containing a two-story, single-family residence and associated accessory structures into a semi-public facility. The relief sought three variances from Section 255-11-10 of the Town Code. A variance of 38.5 from the western side property line for the principal structure where a setback of 31.5 feet is proposed, and a minimum setback of 70 feet is required. A variance of 15.6 feet from the eastern side property line for the principal structure where a setback of 54.4 feet is proposed, and a minimum setback of 70 feet is required. A variance of 17.5 feet from the western property line for the accessory fireplace and patio where a setback of 32.5 feet is proposed, and a minimum setback of 50 feet is required, along with any other relief that may be necessary. The zoning district is A3 Zone X Flood Zone, and it's secret class type one. And do we have proof of service and mail?
We have the affidavits of service and posting, appears that notice was proper.
Thank you. I left out the word posting. And this is in Member Brennaman's district?
Yes, it is.
Go right ahead.
It's behind that, yeah. So I have an admittedly modest report this evening. I visited the property on Monday evening, and then again, today, I was denied access on both occasions. So I have an external recording here, and the first thing I have is a picture of the notice. I will say that it's a little confusing, not having been there before. The address listed on our information is 26 Bull Run. In front of the property is a sign that says 90, I assume it's 90 Old Northwest Road. It's also, I think, that piece of dirt road may be also considered Foster's Path. So it's known by several different locations. The next photo is the fence looking into the property, that would be the main structure. Next photo is me just leaning my phone over the fence to get a little more closer look of the structure behind. The variances that we're talking about are to the west and east of the property, so it would be to the left and the right of this particular photograph, that would be of the main structure. And then also a fireplace in the back of the structure, which I was not able to access. Here I just turn to my right, so I guess that would be facing east down the road. And then the following photo is turning to the left. And there is reference in our technical analysis memo of Jason's Rock, and I believe that might be Jason's Rock heading west of the property. The next photo is the eastern most driveway, which is also likely a service entrance, and I took a quick photo of that. And then the final one is just the sign that I mentioned earlier, which has 90 in front as opposed to 26. I would say that there were also some photos available, although when they were taken, I'm not quite sure. At the duneseasthampton.com, there's a series of photographs online. Couple of those are outside, but again, I'm not sure of the timing of those. So that's my field report this evening.
Actually, that I would like to see that, just for, if you could just leave that up for a minute. Where is Bull Path on that? Is it the blue line on the right?
No, on the right would be Northwest Road.
That's Northwest Road. Bull Path is down towards the west.
Would be to the left.
Okay. All right, got it. Thank you. I was just trying to put it in my mind. Okay.
I can call the G I S up so that we can zoom in and out if you'd like, if that would be beneficial for the conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be useful, yes. Way up there.
Oh, it's a busy dashboard.
It's a busy board.
Yeah. It's probably take about 20 seconds. That's going. So this is the subject property right here. This says you're heading down here. This is actually where Bull Path starts. It's this improved portion of the road. And then I believe right around here is Jason's Rock, and now right here, excuse me. But up until here is actually what's called Bull Path, and then this is the dirt road, I think you said, Cheryl Path or other names, I don't think it's named.
I think it's Bull Run.
Well, Bull Run is up here.
Bull Run, no, Bull Run is the street that comes off of Stephen Hans, right?
Bull Run is this one up here.
Oh, Bull Run, I'm sorry, I'm mixing them up.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right. Bull Path is the main one, and then Bull Run shoots off.
And then that's the flag watch.
Yeah.
That continues, got it. All right, now I got it in my head.
And the last little bit there is dirt road.
Thank you, Mr. Schen.
Sure.
The applicant, the floor is yours. Thank you for your patience, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. Alex Kriegsman, 279 Main Street, Sag Harbor. On behalf of the applicant, just want to note for the record that this was on for a public hearing, there were full written submissions, and a hearing in March of 2017, it's been continued, and all the submissions that we've made, both written and what was put on the record, I'd like that to continue to be part of our application. Given the passage of time, now I want to go over some of the important details here. The structures on the property are unchanged since the C O was issued by the town in 2009. Opened in November of 2010, the dunes is a residence for individuals who are recovering from addiction.
I'm sorry, can you just speak a little louder and have more people hearing?
You having trouble hearing me as well?
Yeah, we did at some point.
Okay, okay. Sure. Let me start from the beginning then. The structures on the property are unchanged since the C O was issued by the town of East Hampton in 2009. The dunes opened in November of 2010. Is a residence for individuals recovering from addiction. They operate as a family unit. In February of 2010, the building inspector was notified of a change in use. He came to the property, was given a full disclosure of the intended operation, and made a determination in March of 2010 that they were operating as a family unit and no special permits were required. The dunes applied to the state of New York Oasis for the permit that they needed with the full support of the town of East Hampton, including written support from the town of East Hampton. And they were licensed to house up to 16 people at a time, although there are usually no more than eight members there. This is all in the record. Five staff members on a daily basis, two staff members three days a week to clean, one staff member overnight for emergency needs. It accommodates eight parking spaces, although very few are typically in use since residents do not bring their vehicles. Suddenly, in 2010, after a New York Post article, and after an attorney named Jeff Bragman, who is now a member of the East Hampton Town Board, was hired, some invisible hand seemed to come in and the town did an about-face and determined that in fact, this was a semi-public facility. That decision was appealed to the Z B A where it was affirmed. And there was a lawsuit that was filed by my client in federal court that was dismissed without prejudice on ripeness grounds. without prejudice on ripeness grounds. We submitted this application for the three variances that the acting chairman noted. And I'd like to address the factors and our request for a reasonable accommodation under federal law. First is that there will be no undesirable change to the neighborhood. In fact, there will be no change at all since the current structure has been in place since two thousand nine. It is well screened as you saw from the photos and it's only an issue at all because of the double setback requirements. Number two, the benefits could not be achieved by another means. They could have been achieved by the other means if this town chose to comply with federal law and give the applicant a reasonable accommodation. They chose not to and that decision having been made, the benefits cannot be achieved by another means. The variance is not substantial. Again, this is an existing structure that is well screened and it is only an issue at all because of the double setbacks. There will be no adverse impact on the neighborhood, none whatsoever. This facility has been operating for eight years without issue. It's also important to note the tremendous benefit that the Safe Harbor Retreat LLC that the Dunes provides to this community. It is no secret that this community is suffering from an opioid epidemic. It is suffering from a substance abuse epidemic. Now, there are a handful of second homeowners in this neighborhood who don't like this facility and they've tried to paint this as just a treatment facility for uber wealthy people.
How many local students are, I think, currently within the facility?
A number of local students, I've got the CEO here, have been treated. There have been up to almost three million dollars in scholarships have been awarded to local people, both as inpatient and outpatient and have stayed there. So I can't tell you who's there right now for certain reasons, but I can tell you that local folks, children and adults have stayed there and almost three million dollars in scholarships have been awarded for that purpose. This is an epidemic and this is a facility that is doing something about it. And that's the reason why when the application was made to the state, it was made with the support of the town. And I would respectfully submit to you that it is shameful to see the town do an about-face and to see the town make a determination that the interests of a handful of second homeowners who didn't even know this facility existed until they read about it in the newspaper is more important than our residents who are being treated there for free. There are people, kids who've come in at the request of the courts and scholarships awarded and free treatment. This is something that's being done for this community. What happened, the about-face that happened is shameful and here's an opportunity for you as a board to follow federal law and give a reasonable accommodation and here's an opportunity for you as a board to right a wrong.
Are we not looking at local law or are we looking at federal law?
Both. I mean, you.
I mean, you're.
Sure. You've got to talk about both of them because it's a variance application so we need to talk about the factors for variance under state law and local law, but we also, state law and local law needs to give way to federal law which supersedes and this town has noted, has taken the position in federal court that they have an obligation to provide a reasonable accommodation and they've said they couldn't have done so to date because we didn't make the variance application. And so here we are. But to answer your question, you need to look at all those laws and that's why I'm addressing them.
Right, so if you stated earlier that the variances were not substantial, but if the double setbacks do exist, these are pretty exist, these end up being substantial variances so that statement wouldn't be true.
Well, your own technical analysis memo notes that the town has the power to approve lesser setbacks.
Oh, I get that.
So, yeah, that's what we.
My point is they are substantial, we are requesting substantial setbacks, they're not unsubstantial.
They're substantial if you apply the double setbacks and you disregard federal law and don't make a reasonable accommodation.
What federal law?
Well, what federal.
The Fair Housing Act and the Americans with Disability Acts both say, and the town has acknowledged this in filings in federal court, that you have an obligation to make a reasonable accommodation to this facility, that recovering addicts qualify as, beyond dispute, are Americans with disability under the act and you have an obligation to make a reasonable accommodation to them.
What aspect of the Fair Housing Law? What aspect of the Fair Housing Act is implicated by this request?
The Fair Housing Act mandates that when a town board such as yours is considering an application that affects a protected group of individuals, Americans with disabilities, to which recovering addicts qualify, you need to make a reasonable accommodation. The Fair Housing Act says that, Americans with Disabilities Act say that, and the town of East Hampton has acknowledged that in papers filed in United States courtroom.
They've acknowledged that that's what the law says. Have they acknowledged that applies to this?
They acknowledge that that's what the law says and they've acknowledged that it applies here and they asked the court to not consider the case because they said they haven't yet been given an opportunity to give a reasonable accommodation because a variance application was not yet submitted. So here it is.
When did they state that?
So, lawsuit was filed in United States District Court, I believe in two thousand thirteen. The suit was dismissed without prejudice with a finding that the applicant had not exhausted its administrative remedies. The decision was appealed to the Second Circuit which affirmed and reached the same conclusion. And then an application for appeal was filed to the United States Supreme Court and the town filed a response to that application and said that they acknowledged that they have an obligation to give a reasonable accommodation, said they'd not yet been given the opportunity to do so because the applicant had not exhausted their administrative remedies and made an application for a variance.
So here you are.
These variances.
Yes, sir. Here we are.
So here you are exhausting.
Yes.
So you're taking care of this first.
We're clear. This right here is the exhaustion of the administrative remedies failing which you'll return to the federal court.
I mean, I'm not gonna.
We're not judging the federal.
We're reserving all of our rights.
Okay, all right, well, all right, got it. Got it. That's where we are in the process.
I appreciate that.
And it was two thousand thirteen when the ruling was changed that you were a semi-public facility, so.
I don't want to speak out of, it was two thousand.
According to the technical analysis memo.
It was, no, I think it was two thousand eleven.
Two thousand eleven.
When the determination, I don't want to speak out of turn though on the exact, it is in the record when that determination was made of a semi-public facility. There was an initial determination that was made in two thousand ten and I believe it was two thousand eleven when the change was made, but that's in the record and confirm that one. I'll get my notes. So, under federal law, there's an affirmative duty which the town has acknowledged to make a reasonable accommodation. And the issue is, does it cause an undue hardship or burden on the municipality? It's clear the facility's been operating for eight years without any issue. I would note, it looks like a residence. Board member noted the difficulty and there's something in the record about it, the last hearing, apparently they couldn't even find where it is. I think that speaks to how well it blends into the community and is indistinguishable from the residents. There are people who work there, just like at most estates and large homes in East Hampton. There are people who come and cut the grass, clean the pool, clean the house, take care of things that need to be done. That happens here. It operates as a family unit. It looks like a residence. Again, it's comparable. The fact that it's been operating for eight years without issue speaks for itself in that it is not any hardship or burden in terms of undermining the basic purpose of the zoning ordinance. Once again, it's been there for eight years. It looks just the same without any issue. I just want to note for the record with regard to the visit, it's my understanding that, and I know that it is the practice of this board to have someone go to the property the night before. First of all, that happened already for the March public hearing. And second of all, this is area variances for side yard setbacks, two from a principal structure and one from a fireplace. And I'm told that someone tried to enter the property at seven thirty PM at night, which I would respectfully submit was unnecessary and inappropriate.
And identified himself several times.
Yes.
And that he was from the East Hampton Zoning Board of Appeals several times.
Yep.
And offered to wait until somebody in authority was contacted and returned today in good faith in hopes that could capture the images to present your case here this evening.
Okay, I appreciate that. And first of all, it's my understanding that today it was communicated that you could enter, but by the time that communication was relayed, you had left. That's what I was told.
I was told definitively today that I was not able to go onto the.
Okay, I would respectfully ask you, on how many other applications where there is a side, where you're talking about side yard variances, do you ask to enter the house at some point?
I visit every property.
You asked to go inside?
I don't go inside the house, but I go onto the property to look at the.
Okay, I wasn't there, but what was reported to me was that you did ask to enter the house.
No.
Okay. I just want to note that for the record.
Well, maybe we should note for the record that that was not the request that was made by the member.
Okay, that's what was.
And perhaps there's been a miscommunication.
That may be, that may be, but that's what was.
No, I mean, on the other side of the fence, so to speak.
Also keep in mind, we have two new board members that weren't on the board during the public hearing, so.
Okay. And again, there was a visit before the last hearing, so.
It was fourteen months ago, fifteen months ago, I guess, the last hearing, so.
Well, I think even the last one, they didn't get on the property, if I recall correctly.
I don't remember.
Yeah, but anyway.
Okay, I don't know the answer to that, but I'll reserve the balance of my comments for any questions you have or to respond to.
You didn't mention, there was a number of comments in here about the clearing on the property. I wondered if you could address that, please.
Sure. Very clearly, we have been told, council has been told by the town attorney that this issue is going to be handled after the variance application. And I know there's been some, apparently some internal confusion within the town whether the planning board was going to go first or the zoning board was going to go first. We went to the planning board, we were sent to the zoning board and we were told, which is acknowledged in the technical analysis memo, that some of this clearing may be a result of how things were done prior to the two thousand nine CO. But nonetheless, we were told that the clearing issue was going to be dealt with after the variance application to the extent something other than that is happening that.
But since clearing is a purview of this board, is it, would it not be admissible for this board in making it determine to require the clearing to come under proper code requirements?
Maybe. I'm just telling you what was told to us and that's what we've followed. And it again.
But I think we have the power to make it a condition of our, if we were to approve this, make it a condition of the approval.
As long as federal law is complied with, then yes, I would agree.
Well, I don't know. Can we make it a condition, counsel? Or, I mean, overclearing is something that would come under our purview also for a variance to maintain it or.
Well, we, the issue is with regard, the trigger with regard to secret as well is whether or not it's a type one action or not. I think what the question was is, at the last hearing, the board was looking for a revegetation plan to, because currently the property is overcleared. I think how the board left it last time was they were looking to see if they weren't seeking a clearing variance, how were they planning on addressing the clearing issue? And I believe the board at the time had wanted to see a revegetation plan with, should there be an approval, said revegetation plan could be a condition of the approval. I think that's kind of where we left it.
And this is in a water recharge overlay district, correct?
Right, right.
And again, I just want to note for the record that my client hasn't done any clearing and that this is a property that got a CO in two thousand nine. I think there's acknowledgement in the technical analysis memo that may have been some issue in how surveys were done. In any event, we're just complying with what we were told to do.
And based on our calculations, you're almost a half an acre overcleared.
That sounds about right.
So.
And I'd like to speak.
Yeah, so maybe Eric, because I'm wondering how the secret fits into this and Eric can probably tell us.
Any else for now?
I'll reserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shans.
Eric Shans for the planning department. The fact is you can't even begin the secret process until you determine whether or not this property can actually even be revegetated. This was my main point at the last review. I'm going to show you what I'm talking about here.
Are we being asked to determine that tonight?
What's that?
Whether it can be revegetated.
I think you have to figure that out. I think you have to require a revegetation plan. It has to be reviewed. We can't even figure out what type of action this is, let alone, nobody's declared lead agency, nobody's prepared an EAF. Normally on a project like this, I would say that the planning board would be lead agency. I would prepare an EAF for them. They'd make a determination and then this would come to you. So I think that there's been some confusion, but this is the point I'm getting at, this is not a very good scan. I apologize. Oops. Yeah, I apologize, this is not very good. I should have looked at this before I looked on the board. But anyway, if you look, you see this bubbly line around the edge of everything? This is the survey attached to the CO, the most recent CO. That's the clearing line. Normally when we look at something like that, we're not that generous with the clearing line. It's usually a minimum of ten feet away from any structure. This is right up to all those structures. Even with that, this passed clearing by about two hundred square feet. And you'll notice the clearing line here, there's a tennis court all the way in the back and the clearing line is all the way around the tennis court with no path to the tennis court. So jumping from there and looking at the site plan, which should be a lot clearer, you can see this clearing edge now has a trail, another trail there, this service driveway here. This is listed as all vegetation, all in the front here, however, in looking at the aerials and going to the site, this clearly appears to be landscaped. I have not been to the interior of the site, however, looking at the aerial.
The, that's a question, the service drive, was that there since oh nine?
Bring that back up.
Wrong one. And tennis court and all that?
The tennis court was there on the CO.
I think everything was.
Can you tighten that, bring it up?
Yeah, actually, you know what? I think I got the GIS open there.
The other way.
Yeah, this has sort of gradually improved, not improved, I shouldn't say it, it's increased, the clearing that is, since oh nine. But, yeah, I mean, it's sort of just been encroaching out. This area, I mean, looks to be heavily landscaped, you know, it's tough to see on these areas sometimes because you can see the large trees, they remain, but the understory's been cleared. So I don't know, you know, presumably this is a service road, they need it to operate this facility. I don't know that they can revegetate this site into compliance with the needs of this facility, which is the big question.
Which would require a clearing variance then.
Yeah, which makes it a type one in which we would strongly recommend denial of, we don't want to see a half an acre of overclearing in the water recharge overlay district. It's also in a number of other important areas. This is a natural white pine forest that's very unique. Obviously, the clearing's already been occurred. You're not going to get equal with revegetation, but we don't want to set that precedent of letting people clear and just letting it stay. So I think that issue needs to be addressed before really this board can move any further or the planning board can move any further. I think we need to see if we're dealing with a type one action. You know, you're being asked to vote on three variances, side yard setback variances, but there's, the plan shows four variances. So you need to figure out whether or not you need that fourth variance. That's my take on the status of the application at this point.
All right, going back to the lead agency.
Why? It was adjourned and they kept requesting, you know, stays and then they didn't, so it came back, but nothing new has been submitted. And the board did thoroughly discuss the issue of a revegetation plan and revegetation, you know, at the original meeting.
I think what happened was that there was some opposition and due to the filings, they requested time.
This board has never been asked to determine if a variance is required. It's always determines whether a variance should be granted.
No, the board is not determining whether a variance is required. They're overcleared right now. The question is whether or not, if the applicant isn't seeking a variance, which we were told they're not currently seeking a variance.
Right.
The board wanted to see a revegetation plan in order to establish how they were going the board wanted to see a revegetation plan in order to establish how they were going to revegetate the property in order to no longer need a variance. That was, I think, what was discussed at the last hearing.
And so that hasn't happened.
But does the lead agency or lack of lead agency at this point factor into this whole thing? As far as the clearing and whether it needs to be.
Well, I certainly think it factors into this board's ability to render a determination. SECRE has to be done. I would think that the planning board is probably going to be the more appropriate lead agency. There's issues of traffic and, you know, compatibility with the neighborhood, which is in your standards, but it's also, you know, a lot in the site plan, special permit standards. Yeah, so I mean, I would think that the planning board is going to need to look at those bigger issues. Does it fit on the site? You know, is there too much traffic? Make a SECRE determination, and then bring it to you guys, and see whether or not you're okay based on your variance standards.
But you can't reach that until we address the issue of clearing. And we can't, tell me if I get this wrong, and we can't address the issue of clearing until we get a revegetation plan. Am I, is that, is that?
Well, I think the board, from what I understood, the board wanted to see the revegetation plan in order to allow them to move forward.
And we don't have that.
Right.
So, why are we here? If there's no revegetation plan.
Well, I think that that's what the applicants need to submit. I think maybe give them some time to submit it. Have it be reviewed, bring it to the planning board. But, you know, I saw that this was on the agenda, and, you know, I guess it just happened as a nature of the result of it being adjourned, and then them requesting extensions and, you know, movements, and then not request. I'm not sure this is the exact record. But then, you know, I saw a couple of weeks ago that it was up on the, you know, before you guys again, and I said, I haven't seen any revegetation plan, you know. I don't know, I can't even tell you what type of action this is, whether or not it's unlisted or type one. So I think that that needs to be addressed first.
So I think there should be a motion then from this board to request a revegetation plan.
Well, has it already been requested?
Or keep it open until we receive that.
I don't know that we need to make that motion if it's already been requested.
I mean, it seems like we're in.
I think we can ask the applicant whether or not they anticipate, why they haven't submitted one yet.
Perfectly fine question.
I mean, I know based on the public comments and stuff that's been submitted by the applicants already, there are a number of other issues that do relate to the variances requested, whether they be the clearing or the side yard setbacks. You did hear substantial comment about those issues at the original hearing. But just so you know, and I know that some of them are there, are here, you know.
Yeah, no, I'm, and I don't mean to put anybody out, but if that issue has to be addressed first, do we address that first and then deal with public comments? Or do we take public comments now? I mean.
Well, I think I would ask the applicant first, and then allow the public to speak. At least then we'll know the answer.
Fair enough. So, all right, so we'll ask the applicant to return to.
Right.
Mr. Shans, do you have anything else?
Not at this time.
Does the board have any further questions from Mr. Shans? All right, so I'll ask the applicant to please step back and advise with respect to the revegetation plan.
Yep.
Is it coming?
Well, I just, I want to answer your question.
Go ahead.
Just want to note a couple of things for the record. Number one, with regard, I think what Mr. Shans was saying was that we requested all the stays or adjourned. My client and I were here in December for a hearing. Posted it, we noticed it, we showed up, and we were told by the board that it had been adjourned after we were already here. I don't know the reason for that.
I think that was a mistake internally. We received a request, not from the applicant themselves, but I believe from the media.
Regardless, okay.
Okay. I'm going to address it, but I want to note that for the record, because something else was said. I also want to note again that my client has done zero clearing, and that that is in your aerial photos, that the road, everything else was there in 2009 when the CO was issued. The question that was posed, why didn't we submit a revege plan? Because we were following the direction that was given to us by the town attorney, that this would be addressed subsequently.
Subsequently to what?
To the application for these three variances that was already pending.
Okay.
But if you're telling us you want a revege plan, we'll go back.
Well, we're also telling you that there's, if there's not going to be or anything, any overclearing is going to require a variance.
Well, I'll tell you first and foremost, my view is that federal law dictates that in this circumstance.
You're going to have to stipulate federal law pretty closely when that could be subjective versus a very clear understanding of local law.
It's not subjective that this town issued a CO for this property exactly as it is right now in 2009, that this town made a determination that this was a family unit, and someone behind the scenes did an about-face that is not a reasonable accommodation, that does not comply with federal law. The request for a revege plan does not comply.
I don't think, Roy, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm saying, we're the zoning board. We're not, whenever the town did that, we're the zoning board. We have, we're looking at zoning, so.
And one of the things we look at in zoning, and one of the things we look at in revegetation, is the fact that this is a water recharge overlay district. And I don't know, having read the cases, don't know the law, but I don't know whether the Fair Housing Act or not addresses issues involving water recharge overlay districts. And I don't know whether or not reasonable accommodations necessarily apply with respect to water recharge overlay districts. It's a completely, it may be, I don't know, because I'm not in the town attorney's office. But it may very well be that this is an area that hasn't been briefed, that hasn't been addressed, that maybe there's not even a single precedent anywhere in the country about this. So, with that in mind, where is our revegetation plan? Or, not where is it, but what are your expectations with respect to that?
And I would tell you very respectfully, that if this board tells us to come up with a revegetation plan, we will do it. But we were reserving all of our rights, including the right to argue that the requirement is a violation of federal law.
Understood that that's done without prejudice.
We didn't do it yet because we were following direction from the town. You tell us to do it now, we will do it.
Okay. All right, good. Now, counsel, let me ask you, with all of that back and forth done, do we need to make a motion to request the revegetation plan, or is it?
No, you'll just do that at the end of the hearing.
At the end of today's hearing?
Yeah.
In other words, we'll keep the record open for revegetation plans. So, okay, in that case, then now we can call on members of the.
Correct.
Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard on this? Please step up and.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Frank Isler. I'm a member of the firm of Smith, Finkelstein, Lombard, Isler and Yakubowski, 4056 Griffin Avenue, Riverhead, New York. I represent the neighbors. I've replaced Jeff Bragman, who was maligned just a few minutes ago. When he became a member of the town board, I now represent the people he was representing in the prior hearing. And in the hearing before that, when the zoning board had to deal with the appeal from the interpretation of the building inspector, where he determined that this site is operated was a semi-public facility, not a functional equivalent of a family. I understand that you're asking for a, finally, to have a clearing plan that we've been waiting for for a year and a half, or a year and three months since the last hearing. With all due respect, and I don't know how the board wants to proceed with this, so I'm going to ask for your feedback on this. We were prepared to oppose this application on the merits tonight. We were going to raise the issue that while we disagreed with the process that had been followed, where there was no vegetation plan, and there was no SECRE determination where this is classified a type one, we felt that the undisputable evidence that we can present to you will demonstrate that the variance being sought, variance being plural, should be denied. If you don't want to hear that argument today, and rather, because you've ruled that you want to get the clearing plan first, I ask you, do you want to hear our arguments on that? If, at this point, we have submittals that we prepared on the law and on the facts, which we could present. I don't know if it's premature now, if you're going to wait for this.
It would require leaving the hearing open, if it's going to be heard.
Well, I don't, I'm.
Well, I think the question, does the board anticipate, if they submit a revegetation plan, does the board anticipate having to come back for another hearing, or?
Well, obviously, it's a new variance. It's going to have to be heard.
Well, it depends. If they do a clearing where there's no variance required, then if they do a plan that doesn't require, that ultimately, there is no clearing variance required.
But it sounds to me like Mr. Shans said that before we can address the other three variance requests that are on tonight's public hearing, that we have to first see, hear, or address in some way the revegetation issue.
Which will.
But that's a threshold. Am I right, Mr. Shans, just, do I have that correct? Yeah, please, just so that we're all on the record.
It's a process question, really.
Oh, sure, let me get that.
Well, that's the next thing.
I mean, my understanding is that the prudent thing to do, and that the process that should be followed, is that the act, the action be established as either unlisted or type one. I don't think I can solve that until I see a revegetation plan. From there, if it is indeed unlisted, they can meet the clearing, a lead agency should be determined. I would like to take it back to the planning board, because I do feel that, I've said from day one that I think the planning board is probably the appropriate lead agency. And then it really doesn't make sense to bring it to this board until the lead agency has done the EAF.
So that I'm, so in other words, it sounds like the first thing we have to do before we go any further is get their revegetation plan.
That's, in my opinion, yes.
And if we, and we are free to adopt that, counsel, are we free to adopt that suggestion from planning, from the planning department?
If we get that, can we get that contingent on getting it back to the planning board as opposed to us?
No, who's that?
If they're going to be the lead agency and have to do the EAF?
Say that again.
It triggers the, if it triggers the planning board, it's coming back to us at a later date.
It's coming back to you, but it's coming back to you for the same issue.
Same issue of?
The variances that are before you.
But is that after the lead agency and all these other issues are addressed?
Well, I think you can, I think the board can, if the board wants to hear public input with regard to the other variances tonight, I think they can do that. The public is here, it's still a public.
Right.
And then move forward with leaving the record open for the revegetation plan.
Okay, that's fine.
And in the same time, dealing with having the planning board catch up and everybody catch up with as far as SECRE is concerned.
Counsel, yes, so what is the timeframe you're going to need for your presentation?
Good question.
Can I just express our objection to this process right now?
And the reason why I asked about presenting our case now is fundamental to this application, or at least one big piece of this application, is the clearing plan, which we, based on what the planning department has advised the board in the submittals it has made to you, they, and I think Mr. Shans has said it today, if they seek a variance, the planning department at least, and it'll be a variance to this board, the planning department will strenuously oppose or recommend against approving any clearing variance for this property. That's what he's put in his report, and I think he said today. That means they have to clear, they have to do a revegetation plan, which is going to take over areas of this property that are being used right now. And you heard a very short presentation from counsel for the applicant. His factual representations to you are absolutely incorrect. He said twice now that they've done no clearing since '09. You heard your own planning department representative tell you that in '09, when the CO came, he had a concern that, at that point, the building department counted up to the building rather than 10 feet back. But if you use the clearing to the building, I mean, using the building as a model, they complied with the clearing requirements in '09, the prior owner, when it was a single-family home. It's now over half an acre in violation of the clearing. That happened after 2009, based on your planning department's report and testimony. So, this is a big issue in this case. And one of the bigger issues in this case, besides the use and the problems we have with this facility here, is that we're dealing with an applicant that unabashedly likes to say whatever comes to their mind is the truth. He has said just today that there aren't employees working there. We have, we would prove to you today that there are substantially more. And one of the other factors that you have to consider when dealing with this application is they're licensed for 16 patients. They're not operating anywhere near that right now, or since they started. You have to evaluate the impact of this site as a semi-public facility on our properties surrounding it at full capacity. These are all these arguments we would be presenting to you. It would take me about a half an hour, if not more, to present it to you today. But it'd be in a vacuum, because we don't know what you're doing with the clearing. And I really think, and counsel was incorrect again when he said that you're the exhaustion for the federal court. You're the exhaust, the remedy exhaustion that you have to go through. You're only one of them. They have to go to the planning board for a special permit on this, to get permission to have a semi-public facility in this residential area. That's number one. They have to get a site plan approved, and they have to be found that this kind of use is compatible. Counsel just stands up and says, you got to make an accommodation. So you have to give the variance, and I guess he's going to say to the planning board, oh, and you got to grant the special permit. That's a fiction. The clearing violation here would apply equally to this property, whether it was a rehab facility or a private, single-family home. This is not a distinction that's being made or implied, applied against this use as opposed to a single family. You've already adjudicated, not you members that are sitting here today, but your board has already adjudicated that this is not an equivalent to a single-family residence. He called it a flip-flop due to some backdoor deal. What happened was, and I have to say this today for the record, when they applied to the building department to take over this residence, they represented in a very short, two-paragraph letter what their use was going to be. It was going to be a recommended residency of their patients for 11 months, and it was going to be, there would be no clinical services provided at the facility. That happened to fit into the raw school decision that had been made by the town earlier as to what constituted an equivalence family. So they tried to fit it in, we have 11-month residents, and nothing other than people are going to be living like a family in this house. Two years before that, the same applicant went before the zoning board in the town of Shelter Island. I happen to represent in that case the residents opposing the application. Their application was, we are going to be taking over the Ramshead Inn. Some of you may be familiar with it. It's a hotel historic building. And we're going to convert it into the exact same kind of luxury facility that they're doing here, according to their plan. The building inspector looked at that and said, wait a minute. The Ramshead Inn is a non-conforming use in a totally residential zone. Our code says if you change a non-conforming use, hotel, to a different use rehabilitation clinic, you need to go to our zoning board in Shelter Island for a special permit. Just, I'll finish the thought. I know it's a little stretched. Their whole presentation to the town zoning board in Shelter Island was that we were a transient use. We were exactly like a hotel. We don't need to have a special permit because we're the exact same use. They come here and they say, oh, no, we're a family use. And they stand before you and tell you these things constantly. And instead of, I think his characterization was, it was an about-face. Well, what happened at the building department was, they realized that what they were doing at the site, after the representation that it was going to be 11 months and non-clinical, the building department learned they were doing clinical at the place and short-term transient rental, patient usage there.
I don't mean to cut off your argument, but I think that if we're going to get into all this, that we're getting beyond the issue of the clearance, the revegetation. And we're going to end up circling right back to that eventually.
The only thing I would ask, and I don't have a problem if we don't go forward anymore tonight myself, my clients do. And because this matter's been going on, I think counsel said something like eight years without incident.
Well, you said you have a problem with the procedure, so, I mean, which way do you want to go?
That's why I'm having this dialogue with you, because I'm troubled by what we should do here, and what would be appropriate for the board here to hear at this point. We would love to get this thing over with. We would love to put our case in front of you and have a ruling on these variances. And we would look aside, if you will, from the procedural defects of not doing SECRE and not having the clearing plan decided today, because we think we have that strong of a case. Counsel said we've gone for eight years without complaint, and we're second homeowners. First of all, there are plenty of year-round people that live there. Secondly, we've been fighting this thing for eight years, and it has been impacting us for eight years. We went a year and three months from the last public hearing on this thing. We've been living with this semi-public disaster for our community there and for the environment. We've been living with this semi-public disaster for our community there and for the environment. They have, the environment, they have a half acre of cleared land in the overlay district, which is a critical environmental thing this town takes very, very seriously. So I don't know what, I'm in a quandary. I would love for you to hear our case and get rid of this thing today.
Doesn't sound like we can go ahead with the other three zoning questions until we deal with the revege issue.
Is there any way you could?
And I, again, I keep coming back to Mr. Shantz on this and to counsel on this. Am I right on that? Because if that's the case, then maybe the thing that we, I know there's another member of the public, at least one, two, thank you, who wish to be heard. I don't know if their issue involves the same issue as counsel is raising right now, but we're going to end up hearing from the public about issues that are not related to the revege issue. And we have to hear about the revege issue. Now, I don't want to inconvenience folks who've come out and stayed late and want to hear, want to be heard, and that's fine. And I just don't want us to be dealing with other issues before we deal with the issue we need to. Tell me if I'm wrong. That's all I want to know.
I think, why don't we ask for the, if the applicant's going to submit a revege plan, and then we'll have to adjourn to a?
If the applicant, yeah, can answer that question, they'll be willing to submit. It's a yes-no question.
Yeah.
Whether, and how long they'll need.
We said yes, so.
I just think we're going to have to keep the hearing open.
Yeah, and, and perhaps if the members of the public who also are here and wish to be heard, perhaps if they want to be heard briefly, so that we know what their issues are, and maybe there are issues that we need to address right now, or add to, you know, whatever agenda we're going to have when we adjourn, it might be helpful for us for scheduling purposes. So, and again, with, you know, I don't, I don't.
So I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, that we call the applicant on a timeframe that they need, and we keep the record and the hearing open until that time, so we can have and continue the hearing.
I'd like to also, before we do that, though, I'd like the members of the public who are here who wish to be heard, if they wish to be heard now, and again, I respectfully request that it be kept brief, if they could come up and speak, if it's, because what I'm concerned is they may raise issues that may warrant further comment by the applicant.
Can I say something that's important?
Please, yes, I'm sorry, I let the planning department, because I rely on your guidance.
Once the revegetation plan is submitted, I can have it reviewed and back in front of the planning board within, you know, three weeks, given their schedule or so, so just keep that in mind as far as the timeframe. And the other thing, not to bring up a new topic, but only because this is important to the design. This was last reviewed in March of 2017.
Ah, I think I know where you're going with this. All right, yeah.
Any change of use that increases onsite parking requirements or sanitary requires a low-nitrogen system.
I know, there you go.
That's going to affect the areas that can remain for vegetation, so, just for the applicants to know in designing this.
When, and when they meet with the planning department, I'm sure this will come up in the conversation. So, if.
Can I just make one request? When you do set the time, that you keep it as, I understand he has to be able to do the revegetation, but that'd be a very limited time period.
Well, we're going to, we're going to call him and ask him about that.
We agree, we've got to get this.
We, well, no, we don't want this thing to.
This hearing's going to be continued, so that like, whatever.
Well, I anticipate, I just want to hear from the public.
Well, if we're going to continue it, we have to pick a date tonight.
Yeah, well, no, we're going to, yeah, yeah, before he goes, let me just hear from, do the members of the public wish to speak now?
Let me.
Yeah, no, I want to hear from the public. And then, again, I know you've been here quite a while.
Yes. My name's Jeffrey Lindgren, I live at 17 Bull Run. I don't want to get off topic about the revegetation, so I'll make it quick, and I know you want to stay on topic. Thank you. Probably, sir, the reason they wouldn't let you in is because they don't want, they don't want you to see what's going on in there. I, I have, I just wanted to say that this is, this is a for-profit business operating in a residential home. They're not a family, they're alcoholics and drug addicts, they're not disabled people. The owner was just featured in a local magazine giveaway glossy summer magazine called Social Life on the June issue, and he very boastfully was interviewed about having very high-end executive clients. And yet his counsel mentioned tonight about scholarships and people in need and needy people, yet he in print boastfully commented about his high-end executive clients. This is, this is a for-profit business operating out of a residential home, and I'm outraged that the town of East Hampton continues to allow it. He says they, their counsel says they have an eight-car parking in front. What they don't tell you is that they park around the surface road to hide their vehicles. When we found out it was residents of their high-traffic area, the owner told the staff and visitors to use old northwest roads so we couldn't see their high volume. There, there's van loads of people in and out there all day long. It's very, very high-traffic area. They've revegetated without telling anybody. If I revegetate in my home down the road, I have to go through the town, I have to get surveyors, I have to go through everything. We added a septic system, cost us $60,000 because we added another bedroom and bath, yet these people are not required to meet any commercial requirements for a for-profit business. They've been rigorously dishonest in all of their dealings. And it's not a handful of residents, by the way, it's the entire neighborhood. The entire neighborhood knows how they've misrepresented who they are. They are a for-profit business, they advertise in the East Hampton Star, he brags about his high-end executive clients in Social Life Magazine, you know, they've been rigorously dishonest.
Thank you.
And I know I'm getting slightly off topic.
Do you have anything additional?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you very much. I see this.
I'll reserve my.
For, for, okay, counsel, if you would, so if you can just give us, you previously said you'd give us a revege plan, give me, give us a timeframe.
I'll do all that, I just want to, just very.
And if you could please withhold responding to other issues, because you're going to have another opportunity down the road. We do have other matters on our agenda that we need to address, and we want to get this one procedural issue ironed out. If you can just give us a timeframe, we'd appreciate that.
I will, I just want to take 15 seconds to thank Mr. Lindgren, because I really, I'm glad that the board was able to hear that, what the real objection is. These people, alcoholics and drug addicts, that's why federal law's in place. I know you haven't read the case law, it's clear Mr. Isler hasn't read it either, but that's why it's there. I will, the same answer I gave you before, we reserve all of our rights, but we will, we'll do what you ask for in terms of revege, we'll do it expeditiously. And I just want to note again for the record, we were here, ready to go forward, in December, the town attorney noted that this was adjourned at the request of an opponent. Just want to point that out for the record. We will do what you tell us to do.
It's 30, it's, board members, is 30 days?
It's more than enough.
All right, can you do it in 30 days?
I don't know the answer that offhand, obviously I'm not going to do it myself, yeah.
We're going to make a motion to adjourn this matter contingent upon a 30-day, I anticipate.
Okay.
That a motion will be made, to adjourn this matter with a 30-day window for you to bring in the revege plan.
I don't think they're getting it back in front of the planning board as well within that timeframe?
No, no, I want them, I need a timeframe for the applicant to put together the revege. You need a revegetation plan.
Yeah, yeah.
You need a revegetation plan, correct?
I'm saying that the time it takes them to get the plans drawn and then for it to get back in front of the planning board.
I'm not interested in what happens after. What I'm interested in is the exit from here and the number of days that they have to get it to the planning department, and then what you guys do with it.
Okay.
However long it takes to get back to us is however long it takes to get it to us, and I ask counsel, is that the way to do it?
Well, I think it would be submitted, the revege plan should be submitted to the zoning board and the planning board.
Very well.
To allow.
And just so they're known, the revege plan can't be properly designed until, and a low-nitrogen sanitary system has been designed, because of no impact on it.
It's all part of the program.
But I'm just saying, they don't need to just contact someone who does a revegetation plan, they'll also need to contract a sanitary.
All right, well, then they'll need to do that.
I just want to note, in my practice, even getting an updated survey, and I think Mr. Shantz can probably speak to that.
30 days, it's not going to be enough.
It's not going to be enough. Again, we're not, we want to get this done, we were ready to go in December. I hate to just speak offhand, because I'm not going to be doing the work myself, but I will represent that we will do it expeditiously.
Well, I mean, I think we should have a window.
60 days?
60 days? That's.
I'd ask Mr. Shantz, because you probably know more than me, whether you think that's feasible, if we act promptly to get all of that done, including this low-nitrogen point that you mentioned, within 60 days.
I think you can.
You can always ask for more time if it, and if it comes in here, we can.
But we're going to need cause, if you go past.
Understood, well, we'll take 60 days, and if for some reason we're being told it takes more.
No, 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 but you know how to make a case, okay?
Okay, understood.
You'll, you'll, you know, it's not just going to be, because you come in here and knock on the door and say, give me, give me one, I'm going to see something.
Just be here for one sec.
Go ahead.
This place is operating without a permit for eight years. And it's allowed to continue to operate. It's operating without a permit in violation clearly of the clearing rules.
And everything we're doing right now at this moment in time, at a quarter to 10 on the 17th of July, is to get us all back on a track where this process can be.
We know surveyors are backed up, okay?
You can get things done and.
We get it, we get it, but they're saying 60 days, and we don't want, as you know, you don't want to give somebody an unreasonably short period of time, because then they'll just come back, and then, you know, they're spending time, you're spending time, let's get it done. 60 days sounds like a good time.
And this was on the calendar in March, and they adjourned that?
Again, we're, we're here now.
Thank you for.
We're just making the record.
I'm, no, no, I, I.
Just making record.
I recognize that, I appreciate that. And please appreciate that what we're trying to do now is get us back on track without looking back over our shoulders from what happened, of what happened before.
And thank you for hearing us.
Quite all right. Is there any other member of the public who wishes to be heard at this stage of the game? Okay, in that case, who's the partner?
Ah, it would be me.
Record of the hearing.
So, in the matter of Safe Harbor, 26 Bull Run, East Hampton, 300-135-01-08, I move to close, adjourn tonight's meeting.
Let's clarify this, I think we're going to have to request a 60-day for the, for the survey, but I think the record, the hearing has to be open indefinitely at this point.
Yeah.
Because there's no way for us to reschedule.
Yeah, no, absolutely, that should be.
So that should be part of the motion, that the hearing is.
I appreciate this clarification, by the way. So we're going to hold the hearing open and hold the record open for the purposes of the revege program for an additional 60 days.
Well, and I think what we're going to do is, if I make a suggestion. We're adjourning it without date, correct?
Correct.
Adjourn it without date, but the applicant has 60 days within which to submit a revegetation plan to the planning department, which will be reviewed by the planning board and the ZDO. Got it all right?
Yes.
I move, I move what the acting chair just said.
Second, second the motion.
All right.
Concur.
Concur, concur. You got it?
So that won't be a continuation, and that'll be a new hearing?
Well, it's a continuation.
It's adjourned. It's this hearing, it's the one that they had last.
They'll have to renotice when it comes back up.
There'll be another notice.
Yes, there will have to be another notice. There will, we clear on that, counsel? You recognize that there will have to be another notice?
Yeah, just so I understood, we have 60 days from today to submit the revege plan, obviously we're preserving our rights. And then after that point in time, you will tell us when the next meeting is.
We'll reschedule and you'll renotice.
Yes.
Are we all good? We agree?
We're going to ask the planning department to act, he said three weeks ago, so.
They're going to, everybody's going to work together to move this case along.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you. No, no, this is the public record, I didn't touch any of yours. I don't think, oh, did I, oh, I'm, oh, this is, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. Okay, folks, we now have one last item on the agenda, and that is a determination on Vandevere. Are we all ready to go forward on that?
We don't want.
Do we feel?
We are ready. It's, it's going to, I think it's going to take some time to go through this.
Yeah, it's getting late.
It's getting late. And it's not, it's not a decision we're obligated to make tonight.
We don't have to make it tonight, no.
Which is Vandevere? No, you have 20 seconds.
Yeah, we have plenty of time, so I'm just.
The only reason I was suggesting it even was, because John's not here, so.
I understand.
So, with that, we have, all the matters on the agenda have been addressed.
Oh, I got decisions.
Oh, you have decisions for us, okay. In that case, let's move on to decisions. What, Vandevere?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, Vandevere, yeah, and I don't want to give it short shrift. And if we have time, if we're not up against the timeframe, then we'll do it. You have a set of keys for me?
I don't, no. You're lucky enough to be going on vacation, so you want to go back and?
I'm not going on vacation.
Oh, I thought that's where you were going, no?
No, no, you're just, no, no, I'm.
Well, Brian said I needed to give you.
You need to give me them so that I can put away this fabulous.
Well, I have the key and I'll do it for you, that's all I was going to say.
What a guy.
Hey, can I?
Okay.
Maybe, I have two decisions for tonight, the Carrie Kirschman and Northwest Properties. I also have two modifications, the AFMP LLC. I also have the Anthony Ingrow. I set it up, just so the board knows, I took the conditions from the previous determination and wrote them all out again. But what I did do was, so like number five was relevant to the, the bridge, the, you know, going around the access, so I deleted that. So anything that wasn't relevant anymore, we went through them when you guys, when you guys discussed it before. So that's why you'll see the deletes are just sections that no longer apply. Certain things such as like the scenic easement, while they prob, they already done, did part of it, they have to file it prior to scenic, prior to their CFO being issued, so that stays in as is. And then I just left the other ones as they were. Even if they may have complied with them already, I just wanted to make sure that they weren't lost and that they're all still here. The additional ones, I just wanted to double-check with the board, and that was the applicant shall submit a monthly third-party inspection, such as by the applicant's engineer, confirming the status and safety of the bridge.
Right.
And then the other one I have is just referencing the construction, that construction protocol shall be, the approved construction protocol shall be followed, any changes shall be authorized by this board. So those are the two additions.
Yeah, that's great.
Was there something about the revege, because they didn't have access coming over from the property next door any longer? Was there a revege?
They have a revege plan.
They have a revege plan that covers that area?
We can double-check that before, and if not, we can. But I just wanted to, yeah, so let, let me check that while you guys look at this.
Were they all unanimous?
Yes.
Okay, good.
They were all unanimous, and I took the chairman's names off of them, so we just want to double-check, I'm not really sure. Yes, so we should be good. All right. And I'll just, we'll check that on the plan, on the revege plan. And if you guys want to look at the revege plan and make sure I got, I got everything here.
All right, we do the, like, district also?
We do.
We do these little district numbers, so we have Montauk, Montauk, and Northwest Property, that's, that's you. And Kirschman is, is that Amagansett Kirschman?
No, no, Springs, I think.
That's Springs.
Oh, look at that. I'm clear all around.
Doesn't he?
Okay, all right, so.
This Kirschman, well.
All right, why don't we start and go?
Yeah, well, I did this too.
I don't care.
Okay. Member Delene, if you would like to lead off.
Sure, this, Kirschman, if you remember, was on the corner of Acabonic and Queensland, with the garage. So with that, I want to make a motion to accept the application in the matter of Carrie Kirschman, Suffolk Tax Map number 300-162-24. Kirschman, Suffolk tax map number 300-162-2-4.
Second.
Concur.
Concur. Counsel, do I stamp these in?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have a determination in the name of Northwest Properties, Inc., tax This is on 68 Muir Boulevard. If you recall, it was the construction of a 3,500-square-foot commercial service building. And we had four of us concur on that. I believe member Wayland was not part of it. I don't remember that being the case, did he?
He's not here.
He's not here tonight.
Oh, he's not here tonight. Never mind. But we all did approve this, so therefore I make a motion that we approve the application
for Northwest Properties, Inc.
Second.
Concur. Concur.
Okay. Now, this is in the matter, this is a resolution amending a determination, modification for AFMP LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map 300-22-1-4. This is at 404 Old Montauk Highway. And if you recall, this modification was to accommodate the move, the DEC-recommended move of the septic system from the north side of the house to the south side of the house. So in this matter, this was approved by all members, and I make a motion to approve this modification.
Second.
Concur. Concur.
Now the fun one.
Okay.
Let me just bring this up.
What?
That the one we just did, or is this the one with...
This is the approved, no, this is the, for Ingraw.
Ingraw?
This is the approved revege plan. I just want to see if it... Question, was the, the clearing on the other property was over here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the one with the bridge, right? Yes.
Yeah, yeah, they're going to come over the bridge, and they were originally going to come through this way.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, I remember that.
Okay, so this is part of the revege?
Planting plan, it says. Planting plan, yeah, that's it.
What is it, does it say what this, I mean...
Is there a code? You might be, you fold it over, so maybe it's on the other side.
Yeah, I think we've got the description there.
No, 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 this is just...
NGAT?
This is timeframe.
Oh, they have the, these are the plants listed.
This is indicating, is this indicating revege?
Yeah, it is. It's at 11, well, I guess it's 1,125 NGAT. Whatever that, it should be in the key.
It's, I think it's like beefgrass or something. I don't know the, what the board property...
Butterfly weed and little blue stems?
Okay, yeah. Flowers. Flowers, yeah.
Okay, so it's...
Exactly. Right. At 10 o'clock at night, that's the technical...
They're thanking for your expertise in that.
My Latin black accent.
You know, though, the monarchs are struggling because of the lack of milkweed, right, in their migration, I think, so. That's, that's a common plant, so...
What can we do about that?